Go, we've, we've just went, we've just went live. So whenever you're ready, you can start everyone, everyone that is registered is here.
Okay. Good afternoon. During the declared emergency committee of adjustment, virtual public hearings are being conducted by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform and streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. These measures are necessary to comply with physical distancing requirements and in-person attendance limitations. This will be a virtual public hearing and participants have registered in advance will be able to make their presentations to the committee using WebEx, an online event that is being moderated by city staff. Anyone wishing to view the hearing may do so by watching on YouTube. Participants who register in advance will be connecting either by their computer, a phone or tablet app or by telephone. All participants will be automatically be muted on entry when your item is called. Each participant will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. Only the committee members will be participating by video. Panel members participating today are Donald Taylor, Neil Palmer, Danny Bellissimo and Sophia Ruddick, and I am Michael Clark and I'm panel chair. All registered participants will be participating by audio only, and we also ask your devices, you to mute your devices until you are called on to speak. Land acknowledgement, we acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississauga's of the credit, Yidana Schnaube, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto was covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississauga's of the credit. According to sections forty-five and fifty-three, the Planning Act nineteen ninety has amended this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto was called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaws that apply to the property permissions to extend or alter lawful non-conform uses and consents to sever properties, create new lots. Anyone in attendance today who wants to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on a particular application must submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, your address and your email address because Committee of Adjustment and in the event of an appeal, the T-Lab will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee rendered here today, decisions may be appealed to Toronto local appeal body, T-Lab, or in some limited circumstances to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. The hearing procedure is as follows, I will call each item in the order listed in the agenda. In making your submissions where an application is uncontested, the agent or application may proceed with their presentation if desired, where the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to address the committee. The committee may ask questions and then take the matter into the committee for a decision. Speaker, including the applicant or agent, will begin the maximum of five minutes to address the committee. And the clock is showing on the, on the screen and we will comment your reaching or reach the five minute mark and ask you to wrap up. When addressing the committee, please start off by clearly stating your name and address. For the record, it's particularly important in the world where you're appearing by audio only. And please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. We deal with planning issues, although issues of construction and other personal issues may be of interest to the applicants. It's not what we're making our, to neighbors rather, it's not what we make our decisions on. We deal with planning issues only. The applicant or agent on a contested matter proceeds first and makes their presentation, the committee of the application. Please note, the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals made at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if being substantially revised in order to ensure that the application is accurate and all those entitled to notice of the application have been informed of the changes. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of the speaker after they finish their presentations. And when all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues and answer those questions were raised by the speakers, not to introduce new information at that time. And when all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has the opportunity to rebut, I already said that, to answer those questions. That will then mark the end of the discussion and the matter is then taken into committee for a decision. Preliminary matter we got to deal with there, do any of the members or staff have any items that they have to declare a declaration of interest on this afternoon session? And to declare, thank you. Defer requests, we're going to deal with those first. I note that we have a couple to deal with that are either on the planning memo for various reason is requested by the applicant or in one such cases, a madam automatic deferral. So the first such item we have will be dealing with twenty-one, twenty-two, thirty, thirty-one A, B and C and thirty-four. So the first one is item number twenty-one. One seventy-six, Sixth Street. It's an application. Rear addition, an addition over the existing dwelling and we have a request from community planning based on item number two, reason number two, and the speaker on this application is, we have two actually, we have the agent, Ryan Wallace, and then we have the neighbor at one seventy-eight, Sixth Street registered to speak. So let's hear from Mr. Wallace.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Ryan is here. I act for the applicants. Mr. Greg Kramer and Ms. Patricia O'Campbell. City staff, as you know, have recommended a deferral to provide adequate time to appropriately review the application. My clients agree. We would like to accept the city's recommendation to defer so that we can ensure accuracy and work with the city to clarify any questions and if necessary propose satisfactory solutions.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions for the agent, Mr. Wallace? If not, we'll weigh in with the neighbor on the line, just on the matter of the deferral. Is Anna Desarwitz on the phone?
Mr. Chairman, just so you're aware, there is a Catherine W. who is representing Anna, who is the neighbor at one seventy-eight Sixth Street.
Okay, fair enough. Good afternoon. Hello, good afternoon. You want to state your name, please, just for the record?
And we are aware of the defer and we welcome it.
Okay, you're sort of cracking up, but I heard you say the most important words that you're aware of the deferral. So you will, your client will be re-notified when this matter is brought back on before the committee. Hello?
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 Unable to hear you properly. You'll have to speak up so the chair can hear what you're saying.
Hello, is this okay?
It's definitely better. Please proceed.
Yes, yes, thank you.
So you're aware of the deferral, you will, your client will be re-notified. Okay, I don't think there's any need to continue. We're having trouble content, hearing you anyway. I don't know if you're having trouble hearing us. Okay, so let's go, committee members, we have a request from community planning. The agent for the applicant is agreeing to the request. Can I have a motion? Like Danny Bellissimo get through?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Are you making a motion to defer the matter, Danny?
Yes.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you, Sophia. All in favor, matter is deferred. Thank you, Mr. Wallace. We'll see you back here again.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, the next item is item number twenty-two, forty through forty-four Breverbrook Avenue. I have a note that this is a automatic deferral. Madam Bartosik. I'm Secretary Treasurer, Barb.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Marco Viera here. I'm the agent and the designer for the applicant.
Okay, thank, welcome Marco. Haven't seen you in a while.
My voice.
Yes. This is Mark, is an automatic deferral. Are you aware?
It is because we worked with planning to reduce and also eliminate some variances, but when we went back and asked the examiner to, I guess, correct the zoning review, she identified an additional variance that had to do with the parking width. Okay, that, that is not on the hearing notice. So we will have to, I guess, come before the committee with a new revised application already with the reduced variances at meet discussions we had with planning.
Okay, and I guess, as you saw, I saw there were a bunch of certain revisions requested by transportation on your site plans, and perhaps you can steam that up at the same time. Get that before the fact. Okay, there's no one else on the line on this application, so man, a panel member is going to have a motion to defer, please. Thank you, Danny. Seconded by. Ms. Ruddick, thank you. All in favor, matter is deferred. We'll see you again.
Thank you.
Next item is item number thirty. Forty-one Ross Say Avenue. Just see the speaker on this application or the representative, that's Andy Trotter, agent. I see here we have it to request by the applicant that due to, there's a missed variance. There's a missed variance. So for various additions. And in the additional materials, again, we have the request in the additional materials for the referral. Mr. Trotter.
Yes, Andy Trotter, eighty-one St. Clarence Avenue. Yes, similar situation. We were working with planning, we sent it back for a second zoning examination and she found a new as variance in that examination that wasn't listed in the initial application, so.
Okay.
Yeah, same thing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Trotter. You're the only speaker registered, so members, motion to defer, please. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Taylor. I saw your hand up a second. All in favor, matter is deferred.
Thank you.
Okay, and one more deferral on this afternoon's list is item number thirty-four. This matter, fourteen eighty Jane Street, construct new self-storage facility, new restaurant with associated drive-through. It looks like this was already a matter deferred from February tenth, twenty twenty-two. It looks like community planning is looking at for the referral for reasons one and two. And the speaker is David Mackay and as well, we have Mike Metos from the Mount Dennis BIA registered to speak as well. It appears that the planning is requesting that the defendant defer this matter, this matter be deferred until the applicant has resolved their outstanding site plan approval issues. Can provide update site plan and ensure all variances are captured. Okay, very specific wording on that. Mr. Mackay?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of committee. We would like to proceed with the hearing this afternoon. The matters that staff are relating to are related to drive-up storage units at the south end of the property. They are, do not affect the variances before you, which are setbacks, density and parking. Notwithstanding the resolution of their concerns with those areas, which are related to safety of attendees to the storage facility. The variances will still be required and will still proceed as being required. So we would like to proceed today with, with your indulgence, please.
Okay, again, another point I guess should mention that I recall, and I'm just going to pull it up, that they also mentioned something about that the plans don't match. You have smart center plans for proposed development doesn't match other plans. There's something about that. Like to weigh in on that matter. I'm just trying to find the letter here, but.
Oh, so, so, sir, we spoke yesterday with planning staff. Their concern was the location of six or eight parking stalls at the south end in front of those drive-up units. At the request of planning staff, we moved those to another area of the site where they could be accommodated to show that notwithstanding the movement of those spaces from the south end where they said they had concerns to another portion of the site, we could still meet the parking variances. And that was the purpose of that request by planning staff. And planning staff came this morning, said that's, they want to still defer the application.
Okay.
We're not accepting.
Okay, Mr. Mackay, I just want to point out that I don't see in the request specifically relating to, and I don't, I'm not saying that you're not telling us. It's accurate, but it doesn't say anything that's only restricted to certain specific storage areas or parking or whatever. It just says they haven't, haven't dealt with that. And they mentioned something more importantly that the says you've demonstrated you intend to revise your plans, but the minor variance application reflects a previous set of plans, the zoning waiver is being used to identify zoning non-compliance, and this may not be capturing all variances. So I guess we'll hear what the members say, but it's at your peril. Yeah, it's at your own peril. So let's see what the committee members feel. Have your issue, you don't want to defer. Let's just hear from the Mount Dennis BIA representative to see if he can shed any light on this. And has an opinion, well, just on the issue of the referral, not on the merits, obviously. So let's, but does anyone have any questions at this time for Mr. Mackay? Okay, let's hear from Mr. Metos, Metos. Do we have the Mount Dennis BIA rep on the, on the line or no?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Mike Metos has been unmuted. He was soundchecked earlier and there was connection.
Okay. Anyway, we're not dealing with the merits, but on the issue of the deferral, I wonder if staff, if members have any questions or if staff wants to weigh in on this issue.
As long as the applicant is aware that should site plan proceed and further variances are required, they'll have to reapply again, pay again. And they'll be scheduled at whatever time.
Okay, so someone has their, isn't muted that I'm hearing some noise on. The fact that the plans don't match, does that from the city point of view or the members' point of view? How can we, if we, the plans don't match? I don't know if that's an issue or not. So again, again.
To the committee if you're comfortable dealing with them.
Okay, committee members, any comment or a motion to either defer or not? Remember, it is a request only by staff, the applicant is opposed to defer. Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, I'm comfortable moving to hearing on this matter.
Okay, you have a second there for that? Mr. Taylor, thank you. All in favor? Okay, we'll, we'll, I don't see Ms. Ruddick, Ruddick stand up, but I agree with you, but we'll proceed three to two. Okay. Go back in line, we'll get, we'll be back.
Chair Clark. Chair Clark. Item thirty-one, A, B and C had deferral from staff, I believe.
Oh, yes, okay. Thank you. I did miss one. I guess we did thirty, but we didn't do thirty-one. Okay, thirty-one, twenty-eight, Van Crescent, A, B and C. Thank you for that, Mr. Palmer. We did, Jonathan Benkowski is the agent on this matter. It's obtained consent to sever the property to two undersized lots and on each side to pair of a new semi-detached and the planning is, this is asking that this matter be deferred for reason number two. Mr. Benkowski, welcome.
Morning, Mr. Chair. Afternoon, Mr. Chair.
Yep. What's your position on the deferral request from staff?
Mr. Chair, we will be proposing some changes to the plans. So, sorry, to the variances as well as the plans. Those changes have been filed with the C of A, so we would like to proceed today.
Hold on, you're saying you're going to be filing changes?
Sorry, we have made changes that have been filed with the C of A and I will make those changes during my presentation, but we would like to proceed today.
Okay, I hope they're mine. Are you, we're saying these plans are not before us?
They are, they have been filed and it is, it is the removal of variances as well as reduction of variances.
Okay, okay, thank you. Members, we have requests from staff to defer for reason two and Mr. Benkowski would like to proceed. I'm need a motion to either proceed or not proceed. Mr. Palmer?
If there's been changes to the application and staff want a deferral, then I think that's two good reasons to defer the application to give proper notice on the variances requested, so.
He's saying that everything's going down. He's, he's reducing and eliminating.
It, other effects, right? The application's being changed. That, that's just my personal opinion.
Okay, so your motion is to defer.
Defer.
Okay, you have a second there for that?
And Bellissimo?
Mr. Bellissimo, all in favor? To defer? Uh, so again, so it kept, Ms. Ruddick had her hand up, so that's three against deferring me and Mr. Taylor. Or Mr. Taylor, you're, you're wanting to defer or you don't want to defer?
I don't want to defer.
Okay, so the motion carries three to two. We will be deferring.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Benkowski, it was close, but the matter is being, been deferred.
Thank you. Enjoy the afternoon.
Okay, you too, sir. Good thing is you don't have to hang around and listen to us all afternoon. Okay, so thank you, Mr. Palmer. I think that captures all of the the deferral requests today. And we can go back up to the top of the list and start hearing. The first item is item number nineteen. Number nineteen, just bear with me one second. Is eleven Alicewood Court, an application to construct a second story addition above the existing dwelling, six variances. We have a presentation. We have two planning conditions. Urban forestry, three conditions from ravines and natural feature protection. TRCA supports the matter in principle. And I set out the requirements. We have support from fifteen and nine. Uh, the question for me is whether these TRCA requirements constitute a condition. Perhaps we'll get to that a little later on. Okay, and that's basically all we have on that. And we have one speaker, Arlene Beaumont, agent for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you mentioned, Arlene Beaumont, Outridin Associates, we are the agents for the applicant here today to request six variances. Two are related to existing condition. Four are related to a proposed second story addition to the existing one-story dwelling. Our office did send through a couple of PowerPoint slides. I'm hoping you can pull them up, please. Yes, thank you. So that's the existing dwelling on our front page. Second slide, please. As I mentioned, six variances, two are related to existing conditions. Those are the existing side yards and four related to the proposed addition. Next door, uh, next slide, please. So here you can see on this plan, you can see the existing side yards. Next slide, please. Now to the variances related to the addition. So we need a floor space index variance. We're proposing zero point five six times the lot area. That is very much in keeping with what's been approved in the neighborhood. And you can see on Turndale, there was a point six oh, yeah, point six oh approved in two thousand eighteen. That's very close. It's about a block away. And we've provided three other examples, again, in the neighborhood of similar floor space indexes that have been approved in the last few years. Next slide, please. Um, there's also two variances related to the height of the main wall. We're proposing seven point two seven. It's the same height to the underside of soffit or slightly more, seven point two five to the underside of the soffit under the old bylaw. And it's just a matter of, you know, obviously about a foot higher than permitted, but the overall height of the building does comply. Next slide, please. So we've just got some pictures here of other two-story dwellings in the neighborhood. And as you can see, what we're proposing for this lot is very similar to, to what's existing in the neighborhood, very much in keeping. Next slide, please. And the final variance is for a balcony, a rear, a rear yard balcony of seven point two five square meters. And as we've noted, we are looking over a park, so there's no privacy, there's nobody in behind, no privacy issues there. And both the side yard neighbors have, have provided a letter saying don't oppose the balcony. So just to sum up, minor variances, the proposal is very much in keeping with other variances that have been approved in the neighborhood. And the, the style of the home is very much in keeping with other homes in the neighborhood that are two-story. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Beaumont. Does anyone have any questions for the agent? And I assume you're okay with the recommended conditions from planning.
Yes.
Ravines and natural feature protection and TRC, and my question again to staff, perhaps whether those are just requirements or those, those constitute a condition or not, I have no idea.
Um, the second one is actually also from ravine, but they've said that there are no conditions that are applicable.
Okay. Great, okay. Um, so does anyone have any questions or is someone ready to weigh in with a motion?
Danny Bellissimo is ready to weigh in for motion. There's no questions. I find the presentation is excellent and it was dealing with all the issues that I had, the side yard setbacks are existing condition, the overall height complies, so soffit's not an issue of mine. The floor space index, I noticed the site, the property is not that deep, so I've accepted position that the overall volume of the building is in keeping with the neighborhood. So I would like to move for approval of the variances submitted to the conditions by forestry and planning.
Thank you, Mr. Bellissimo. Second for Mr. Bellissimo's motion, please.
I don't see anything for forestry.
Those enough too. Well, you're right. Sorry, I take that back. No forestry condition. I know why I wrote that.
Well, there, there is a memo in the, in the documents here from ravine protection.
Right.
Yeah, and, yes, and they cite a number of conditions, do they not?
Yeah, three, I saw three conditions from them. TRCA had a more disset of requirements, but there were definitely conditions from ravines and natural.
Okay, yeah, ravine, but not urban forestry.
No, our, our NFP conditions, three of them.
Danny, you're okay with those?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay, okay, so modified, the motion is modified, all in favor. Unanimous approval.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, before we continue, sorry for the interruption. We had one agent who had a lot of trouble connecting and we believe that we have him. I just want to soundcheck him to make sure that he's good to go.
Sure.
I have a call-in user with the phone number six four seven eight eight eight, and I'm assuming that this is Franco Spagnolo. Can you confirm, please?
Yes, confirm. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Okay, great. Thank you very much. We're glad.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we can, we can move on.
Okay, thank you. Next application is item twenty-six, Stock Avenue. It's an application to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage, two variances, arborist report and urban forestry requesting condition one and absolutely nothing whatsoever other than that. Martin Cordos is the agent. Mr. Cordos.
Good afternoon, Martin Cordos here on file sixty-two, Stock Avenue. We believe we have a very simple case here of, of two minor variances. We're, we're asking for a soffit height of six point six nine meters. The allowable of six point five meters, so we're asking for a nineteen meter variance. Our second minor variance is regarding the main pedestrian entrance, we are looking to. Um, have one point three six meters above grade, current allowable is one point two meters, so sixteen centimeter delta.
Okay, um, there's no any questions, I assume not for Mr. Cordos, or someone ready to make a motion?
Any Bellissimo is ready to make a motion, so no further questions, I find a variance of minor nature, in particular the. Number two, given the height of this overall building, that that'd be not noticeable by their street, so I move for approval. Of the variances. And I believe the condition number one, forestry.
Thank you, second here for that. Mr. Palmer, thank you, all in favor? Unanimous approval. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two have both been deferred, so move on down to item number twenty-three.
Mr. Chairman, for item number twenty-three, just a point of clarification, Mariana Pimentel, the owner, will not be representing the application, instead. It will be the agent Ian Clark, C L A R K E.
Okay. Other than that, I have one, two, three, four, five, six other speakers on this matter.
We did have the neighbor, we did have the neighbor for, from thirty-five Rizden Court, Ida McIntyre. But she has since dropped off the line, but everyone else is, should be present.
Okay, we'll have a good representation. Five speakers and, okay, so just to introduce this matter, we do have revised the revision page showing some additional page changes, this is for sixty Rizden Court. It's to construct a one-story garage addition, a second story addition above the existing dwelling, and a new front porch. And we have the revisions, there were two variances, there are still two variances, the FSI has been reduced from point five five, where point four or five is permitted. To point four six, as well as there's a flat roof height variance of the point three eight of a of a of a meter. Uh, we have. In the, um.
You can continue now, Mr. Chair.
Okay, um. We have the room back, so I'm going to reintroduce this matter, sixty Rizden Court, we have five neighbors present to speak. Some application for a one-story garage addition, a second story addition above the existing dwelling and a new front porch. We had two variances, we still do, we have a revision whereby the FSI variance from point five five has been almost totally eliminated. It's been reduced by forty-four meters. Uh, square meters, and now we have a flat roof height variance of point three eight of a of a of a meter, we have nine letters of objection. Assumingly written prior to the elimination of most of the FSI variance. Uh, a quick leaning shows that neighbors are against the flat roof and feel that the slope roof is a traditional. Slope roof is prevalent in the neighborhood, and we had additions of nine letters, we had additional letter and the additional materials from fourteen Brancaster directly behind. And in the additional material, which we perhaps get up on the board. The applicant's response to the neighbor's letter of objection, so I'm going to turn it over to the agent, Mr. Ian Clark. And perhaps to start off to explain how they were able to reduce most of the FSI. Um, I assume that the plans bear that out, so we only have a point one percentage, as well as the flat roof issue, which is point three eight too high. Okay, Mr. Clark.
Uh, good afternoon, um, yes, I'm representing the owners for sixty Rizden Court. Um, yeah, so the, the, as you said, the, the height of the roof, we're applying for a variance for that. And I think we're just over a meter, is it a meter, um, for, for the height? And also the floor area.
Uh, I see it, sir, sorry, I see it as from point six five to point. Six point eight eight is point three eight of, sorry, point three eight of a meter. So you're just over a foot.
Yeah, point three, so about fifteen inches, I think it was.
Okay. Okay, that's different than a meter, right?
Uh, yes, sorry.
Okay, go, continue, please.
Yep, and you'd asked the question about reducing the floor area. Um, we were planning to convert the garage into into living space. Which is what we removed, and basically it's going to be a storage area where we have a furnace room. Um, and probably a hot water tank as well.
Okay, so you're saying that the room hasn't, that it hasn't been reduced, but the use.
Yes.
Of the garage as living space has now been converted back to something that doesn't count.
Right.
Towards FSI.
Yes.
Okay, sir, you just wanted to know, because we have five people registered to speak after you, you're going to listen closely and answer, respond to their concerns. Uh, my question is, are you, are you a planner?
I'm a designer.
Okay, thank you, just wanted to clarify what your position is on this matter.
Yep.
And you're, and you're familiar with it, because at first you thought it was a meter variance, or that was just?
Uh, yes, yes, I actually did the plans, sorry about that.
Fine, okay, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Clark? Before we move on to hear from the neighbors.
So Danny, but that was a quick question, a bit confused, the floor plan still says garage, did you submit new plans or?
Um, we did submit a plan with the revision for that space.
That plan would say what in the garage now, storage, utility room?
Uh, I think it said storage.
Okay, that, I don't have that plan, so I'm confused, I didn't see anything, any additional material, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, well, this is very, quite important, so I see on there, when I click on revised plans.
Yes.
My, in our bookmark, I see a series, I don't see a datum, is there a date on this, it says Plan Z A zero zero zero, oh, January tenth. Is that the most recent up-to-date plan?
Um.
Mr. Chairman, it's revised plans that were received May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, which I'm sharing the first floor plan on the screen right now.
Oh, so is that in the additional materials?
That is in the regular agenda.
Okay. Oh, under applicant revisions, I see, okay, it wasn't under revised plan bookmark, it is under applicant revision. Anyway, but I don't know, I don't still don't see, happen to see it, I just go right into the letters of objection, anyway.
Maybe the applicant can address, because the only difference I can see is that they've gotten rid of a mudroom. But that would still count towards GFA. So I don't know if they're aware of that.
Okay, here's a very important question for Mr. Clark. Mr. Clark, did these, did it go through a revised zoning, do you have a zoning waiver, or how are you, how are you here, are you on a waiver, or did. Planning department relook and recalculate your area?
A waiver. We, we did, we did submit, um, uh, the, the plans to, to planning, which they reviewed.
Okay, so they don't identify variances, the zoning, the building division does.
Yeah, so who's, who's the, who, who changed it from point five five to point four six based on your relabeling? A garage that was going to be used to living area, so it's not going to be a garage, it's going to be storage area?
Yes, but that was, um, um, communication with, with, with planning.
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, who, who agreed to, uh, to change that, and then are you deficient of parking space, I don't want to like make things too complicated, but. Something seems a little bit fishy here, so that's why I'm asking these questions.
Mr. Chairman, the revised plans are accompanied by a waiver, which I'm sharing on the screen right now, so it's the revised plans and the waiver correspond.
Okay, okay, and so, Mr., yeah, Mr. Bellissimo, you followed, were you able to find those plans you were looking, you were asking about?
No, I might have to put on a plan that does not say garage, all my plans say garage, so.
Yeah.
Yes, that's all.
Okay, anyway, okay, let's hear, we got five neighbors, we might as well hear from them at this point. Um. Interesting, okay, and the gentleman speaking is not a registered planner, he's a designer, so. I'm just wondering who, who agreed, or like, we're going to listen to five people now, based on a, a certain situation, where now the FSI has been reduced. From by over almost ten percent to only one, one percent over. But, okay, the first, well, what matters, we'll hear from these people in order, the first speaker is Julie Carlisle from twelve Brancaster Court.
Yes, I'm here.
I think you're, you're behind the property, and we just, results received a letter from fourteen. So you're the first speaker, ma'am, you have five minutes to let us know what your concerns are.
Okay, thank you. Uh, our biggest concern is the privacy, obviously, because we can already see the windows of the one-story dwelling. And to have a second story put on top of there would certainly invade our privacy immensely. Uh, our property line in the back at twelve Brancaster is approximately three and a half feet lower than the edge of the property line to sixty Rizden. And the topography continues up from there, so we're looking at quite a grade. And that should really be taken into consideration when building a second story. As that four feet is going to be that much higher. So variance or no variance, this is an immense invasion of privacy. And it's just going to be horrible for us to just look at that, we can see it. It will see it from inside our house, but from the deck, the backyard, where we enjoy all of our time, our summers, and the pool. Not to mention the construction is just going to have the dirt in our pools again, all summer, it's, it's very intrusive. The privacy issue is horrendous, and I really do believe that there should be a new survey to consider. That extreme difference in the geography of the land.
Okay, uh, that's, that's the end of your submission, ma'am?
I think that's all I can say right now, but we're extremely opposed to the.
Yeah, okay, thank you, that picture is taken from your, from your window?
Yes, from inside of our home.
Okay, we'll have the applicant comment on that, any, do any of the members have any questions for the speaker, Ms. Carlisle? Okay, if not, let's hear from the next speaker, Alex Crane. At fifty-eight Rizden, right next door.
Hi, guys, before I start, I'd like to point out that you've mentioned that it's only a one percent increase, that's actually incorrect, it's actually point. Uh, zero one divided by point four five, which actually works out to be two point two two percent, I know it's not much, but it's actually double what you said.
Right, okay, what I meant was, I'm sorry, let me just pull up the notice again. What I meant is it's only like a point one from point four five to point four six.
Right, but you mentioned.
I mentioned it was one, yeah, I just meant it was point zero one. He's only over point zero one, we're previously over. Point like eleven, right, and I'm wondering how he did that, I wonder how he accomplished that, just by, without actually taking anything away and just doing a labeling change?
Absolutely, absolutely, I was just gonna, I was just pointing out that you actually said percent, but it wasn't percent.
All I'm saying is that, what I've, you and neighbors listen, when I was trying to establish from Mr. Clark. Was that, in fact, he made, it wasn't staff, he proceeded on a waiver. So he's the one who's determined that the FSI has gone down. If he's wrong, and he got approval at point four six, and it turns out to be more than point four six, he would have to come back.
Okay.
That's the risk to him, of doing a self-identification. Okay, so please proceed, I didn't want to, I just wanted to make it clear for you and all subsequent speakers. But thanks for clarifying, I didn't mean one percent, I just meant point zero one.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Clark, I have a few things I'd like to read. Um, I've gone to, I've gone to the trouble of consulting a professional engineer. And we've come up with what we believe to be a fair compromise that addresses the neighbor's concerns about light ventilation, black body radiation and privacy. While giving the applicant the height they were looking for within their build. The compromise involves having sixty Rizden start with a wall height of five point eight eight meters. And then raise it one meter to their desired height, or over a horizontal distance of five feet. To give a sloped, flat, hybrid roof that they could vault the inside ceiling of. Sure, they lose space around the perimeter, but this compromise lowers their floor space index and opens up another three months of light for me. And lessens my concerns of ventilation and black body radiation. Opens up more light for sixty-two Rizden, while reducing the privacy concerns of the Brancaster neighbors. Because the exterior walls will be lower, and thus the windows as well. And this is why I had to pursue this compromise. Fact, ninety-five point eight seven percent of the homes in this subdivision built circa nineteen fifty-eight are well within the floor space index and building height guidelines. As well as ninety-nine point four two percent of the homes are slope roof. As such, the proposed building is overwhelmingly discordant with the slope roof, single-family homes that characterize this neighborhood. Fact, not one, not two, and not even a dozen, but a full sixteen neighbors oppose sixty Rizden's variance proposal. And would prefer they build within the limits set by the city bylaws, why? Because we, the neighbors, value a balance between living and green space. As seventy Rizden eloquently phrases it, I am concerned by what I perceive as efforts to chip away at what we have. Fact, many objects, including homes, act as sources of black body radiation. They absorb incoming solar radiation during the day and radiate this energy out at night as infrared radiation. A six point eight eight meter wall along my east flank could increase the radiative effect by as much as four hundred and fifty percent. While a five point eight eight meter wall by as much as three hundred and seventy percent. Since infrared radiation is radiated out in all directions, and the wall will extend past my home. Now, I'm most concerned during the summer months when this wall will essentially cook my home during the night. Cooling costs are not immaterial and are projected to increase by two percent each year. As a near-future senior on a fixed income, living in a time of global heating, this is particularly concerning, but I'm willing to compromise. Fact, my home has three east-facing windows on the main floor, two in the basement and one adjunct west-facing window, essentially a narrow slit. I cool my home at night by leaving my east-facing windows and the west-facing window of my front screen door open. To take advantage of the predominant westerly cross breezes. This proposed wall along my east flank will restrict cross breeze egress, decreasing my access to this cooling effect and increasing my cooling costs. Fact, the proposed wall will run essentially the full length of my east-facing windows and block sunlight. Until the sun reaches an angle of forty-seven point four degrees above the horizon in Toronto. Which translates into a full six months of zero direct eastern sunlight through these windows. At a time of the year when the sunlight itself is at a lower intensity. If the walls of sixty Rizden are dropped to the compromised value, I pick up another three months of sunlight. I'll take that, and so should you, because the benefits of sunlight are numerous, including alleviating depression. Building strong bones, which is crucial to seniors as they age, and cancer prevention. My mother died of colon cancer, and thus I'm also at high risk for cancer. By blocking access to direct eastern sunlight, my quality of life directly suffers. Fact, sixty Rizden provides two examples of homes similar to what they want to build. In comparison to fifty-eight and sixty-two Rizden, both fourteen Courtrite and seventeen Ashfield are tilted further west on their longitudinal axis. Those numbers being eleven point seven and twenty-five point two degrees respectively. Their neighbors are aligned parallel, with the exception of nineteen Ashfield, which is even more east-west facing at forty-three degrees further west than fifty-eight Rizden. This means they all. This means they all get east-west direct sunlight through their front and back windows. The upshot is that the example builds provided by sixty Rizden do not impact upon their neighbors' east-west light as much as sixty Rizden's will, and by extension, as the predominant winds are from the west, ventilation is well. So we are really comparing apples and oranges here. My last fact, I consulted with a city employee and he said my home may well be classified as an unique case due to its orientation and window placement. I thereby urge.
Please wrap up, please.
Yes, I urge the committee of adjustment to send someone out to address my situation before a decision is made. And I've I basically outlined empirical evidence why the variance should not be approved and what I believe is a fair compromise. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This this compromise, which actually, you know, you said you got professional planning advice. Had you ever discussed that with your neighbor or is the representative?
Uh, no, sir. The neighbors uh are not amenable to actually talking to anybody.
Okay, because you know, I'm I'm just saying this is not, this is not a working charrette. This is like a hearing, right? So it sounds would like what you say if it's a and a solution rather than say this. You know, that's always, we love the solutions. Everyone wants to keep everyone happy and give them what they want and not not impact you. And you did mention, I just want to say, sixty neighbors. We don't go by numbers. We go but you're the most directly affected, the most, you know, people right behind, people on both sides, people across. So numbers are good, but you are you're you're someone we have to listen. You're the most directly affected party, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and you have one interview questions for Mr. Crane before we move on to the next speaker? Okay, uh, the next speaker then is Mr. and Mrs. Broderick at fourteen Brancaster, whose letter we have in the additional materials. Uh, and um are directly behind, I believe.
Good afternoon, committee members. I'm Jean Broderick. And uh myself and my husband own the property fourteen Brancaster Court. And we're located directly behind sixty Rizden Court. Uh, we've lived in this area for twenty-one years now, and we love this neighborhood. And we've raised two young boys here. And I object to the minor variances for the following reason. First and foremost, the geography of the land has our property at at least four foot below the edge of the property line of number sixty. This difference in height already has the existing single-story building much higher than ours. And any further addition will massively impact our view of that property and our privacy. I suffer from anxiety issues made worse, obviously, during the last few years. Um, but during this time, I I've used my garden every day. It's been my sanctuary and, you know, I uh it's it's a good quality of life for me to have. Um, myself, my family spend all year in the garden, enjoying both the pool and the hot tub. And this privacy is what, again, gives me good quality of life. And the proposed bill will allow the property an overview into our windows, our garden and private family area. I know I don't have a legal right to privacy or to a view, uh but I kindly ask the board to consider the degree of discomfort and sense of being exposed can bring with such a visual intrusion of this nature. Another issue that was brought to my attention, obviously, just because of the recent rainfall that we've had, is again, because of the height difference in the lot, we already have a water drainage issue due to the height. Um, a height distance distance of the plots behind us that causes runoff into our garden, which is saturated during the spring months, and our lawn doesn't even dry out until we're a good stretch of hot weather to do that. And the foundation of these old homes is particularly vulnerable to water leakage and lot drainage that can be created by a a new build such as this that's proposed. I kindly request that this be addressed. As to the character of the neighborhood, while there's no bylaw that states what style a home you must build, the character of the neighborhood is deserving of protection and should be a factor given serious consideration by the committee. A new build should be compatible and respect the established physical character of this neighborhood. Yes, there's similar builds in the area. However, every build is different. As for the loss of light, um I really feel for my neighbors that will have that loss of light from this proposed build, particularly fifty-eight Rizden due to east-facing windows on the main floor and two in the basement. Sunlight is a very important factor of our health and well-being. Finally, necessity. I'm asking the question as to whether the need can be shown for an increase in floor space. How many occupants are there? Can the increase in density and the impact on the abutting owners and neighbors be warranted? With no harsh compelling reasons or need to be demonstrated for overbuilding. Need is a valid valid issue, not convenience or profit. Could I also ask, if I have any remaining time, that it be given to Alex Crane if he so chooses? I kindly again thank the board for listening to my objection.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. No, we're not the U.S. Congress. We don't our yield our time to another speaker, but Mr. Crane, uh, I believe in Mr. Crane. Yeah, Mr. Crane, again, who we we let, I think he went an extra minute in any event, but he got his points across and I he was, we have his letter as well. It said out all his his uh his position as well. So thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Ms. Broderick, Broderick? Members, any questions for the speaker? No? Okay. Uh, so then we'll move on to the next speaker, Ida McIntyre at thirty-five Rizden.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, um um Ida McIntyre is not on the call. Um, but with the next person at forty-four Rizden, Sherry Per- Perdicaris is.
Okay, she lives closer anyway, so same side of the street too. Okay, um, this Peri- uh Caris.
Uh, yes.
Yeah, do we have a letter from you that we can follow along or I'm not sure if you want to?
Uh, you you do have comments from our family, so I'm representing our family and uh comments were sent in from my husband, George.
Okay. Just looking for it right here so I can read it while uh.
Yeah, he's he's just not available, so.
Okay, no, you go ahead, so I'm just trying to.
This is a lateness, but um but I'm at uh I'm at forty-four Rizden Court. Uh, our family has had this home for just over forty-six years. And we do have an objection as as far as to our neighbors at sixty Rizden as far as for going beyond the uh uh the footprint uh of the home as well as obviously the height and uh concerning the concerns that the neighbors have directly beside and directly behind. We're fortunate in our home that behind us is a major street. However, we are at the top of the court and I would like to eventually try and renovate and possibly add a second floor. However, as a neighbor, I would be very conscientious to my neighbors on the north and south of me. Um, and certainly put that into using a proper planner rather than possibly a designer uh to ensure that I'm following all of the bylaws. I've gone through this experience actually for our cottage and uh do appreciate the cost that goes into planning and appreciate the cost that goes into making sure that all the bylaws are being met. Now, being in this neighborhood for so long, uh again, I um we we love living here. Uh, the need of what we see now and finding out at the beginning of this hearing is about the garage now being put into a living space but storage. Now, single garages are quite large, so I do I do find that very questionable as far as taking um average of a hundred and fifty to possibly two hundred square feet and making that storage for a furnace or water heater. So I I very much question that and I very much question the openness of of the uh the people, of the owners at sixty uh Rizden. And as well as, more importantly, I do understand and having gone through this myself that this be site-specific. So regardless of the other homes that have invested and renovated on this street, at sixty Rizden is particularly interesting because the way it grades down the street uh going east and especially hearing from our neighbors behind, it is very concerning and especially for Mr. Crane, who is directly uh on the west side, is very concerning. And uh having, I know we touched on um as far as the benefits of sunlight, uh I am a caregiver for two two people in my household suffering uh uh mental illness and vitamin D and sunshine is critical. We have a we're fortunate enough to have a very large sunroom in the back of our house. And that has been incredibly important. And with the privacy of our our new backyard and the landscaping we've done, I can really appreciate how important privacy is. So I encourage the owners at sixty Rizden to uh to really review how they're going to go about this and to complement the neighborhood and a neighborhood that we've all that we've all loved and that we've all lived in for so many years. And we want to continue to see that the neighborhood uh uh complements and our neighbors complement. I think I think that's all.
Okay, thank you. Um, any comments uh or any questions for the speaker at forty-four Rizden? Okay, if not, we have one more speaker, Janet Frelick at sixty-two Rizden and um her letter is at letter, opposition letter seven in our bookmark. Like to follow along. And just to point out, like, um we're hearing some issues about the use of the characteristic of what the garage space is, whether it's living space, if it's, you know, on the one hand, um whether it goes towards FSI or not, you know, it reminds me of some of these, you know, large houses and uh there's, they build out into the roof line. It doesn't affect the building envelope at all. Uh, it's not like they're going to cram more people in. It's just using more space. So the question is, what would be the impact if, in fact, this is living space versus it's still there, it's still whatever. If it it doesn't affect the some being bigger, isn't it just all part of the same building envelope? So I'll just throw that out and we'll go to Janet Frelick, I guess, to uh be the last speaker. Uh, then we'll go back to the applicant uh for his rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There was some trouble with my um sound check. Can you hear me down now?
Yeah, I think you're a little loud, so maybe if you could step a little back from the microphone?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to speak at this here. My name is Janet Frelick and I live at sixty-two Rizden Court, my partner, Jonathan Burke. I consider right now in our respective letters of objection submitted on June the second, the lone concerns center on the proposed height of that dwelling and the flat roof design. Having read the letter of June the sixth to the committee of adjustment and the applicants, I have chosen to bring my remarks to the in response to their cover letter with my concerns in mind. So I'd like to um.
Ms. Ms. Frolic?
Yes.
Just losing you there. Hello?
Sorry for the interruption. I'd like to speak to the neighbor's reaction about the neighborhood impact and privacy and the health and development of ourselves.
Can you talk a little, little, little softer, please? You're coming in very loud and just try to just talk a little loud, less projecting into the microphone?
Okay.
Okay, just not if you're too close or what, but just, yeah, just continue, please. Thank you.
All right, let's start this again. Um, I'm not, I'm not going to reiterate the uh the objections that that all of the neighbors have already stated. So, oh, okay. It is disturbing. No consideration of these concerns was demonstrated in the response from the applicants. Concerns are disregarded as irrelevant because similar houses have been built elsewhere in the neighborhood. This has nothing to do with the case in point. The person in the city planning department assured us that precedence plays no part in their decisions, that these applications are dealt with on a case-by-case basis. There are many possible reasons why the houses pictured in their appendices were allowed. It was not a valid argument that addresses our concerns. In light of the number of written notices received, dismissing these concerns is so disappointing. There's little respect or consideration being shown for the common good of the neighborhood. Prejudice must be given to the concerns of neighbors. Their lives, health and well-being of these neighbors will be impacted by this build, and that should count for something. It is our contention that the choice of a flat roof will reduce the amount of natural light on the west side of our house, negatively impacting the quality of our life. The suggestion of a slope roof was put forward as a solution to this concern. The applicants are right when they say that there is no bylaw that says what style you must build. But when facts have been presented and several objections have been learned and concerns expressed, surely there should be a pause and time taken to reconsider. I was sorry to read that the interpretation of neighbor's reaction is seen as not wanting a modern house. Asking that the build keep with evil existing bylaws and suggesting a roof design more conducive to natural light access is a means to protect what is seen as the value and attractiveness of this area, something that the applicants also value. This also should count for something. However, a very majority of the homes in this area have sloped roofs. The most recent new modern developments at Aaron Buteras and Run of Rain were built with sloped roofs. The two houses on Rizden Court and the two number eleven cited in their response have sloped roofs. Homes are being built with sloped roofs for a reason. While the applicants view their variance request as nonher clearly, there will be a major impact on the health and well-being of those living next to this development. I respectfully ask that consideration be given to how the plans might be modified to address the objections and maintain the style and functioning of the proposed project. We would like to see a win-win situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frolic. And uh obviously, you're the most, you and Mr. Crane are the most directly affected, being the next-door neighbors. Does anyone have any questions for for Ms. Frolic? And if not, we're going to go back to Mr. Clark for his rebuttal to all that. I commend all the neighbors for, this is obviously a very serious matter, a very important matter to them for taking the time uh to be present here and to let us know their concerns. And Mr. Ian Clark, on your response, I'd like you to, whether um, I guess you're I guess I just realized, we have, you hadn't heard the Celeste, Mr. Crane's suggestion. Uh, did your client, okay, you didn't hear of that until today, I guess, but did your client at all consider a slope roof as being a better compromise uh to fit in with the neighborhood and to uh as the to affect the area neighbors? So the floor is yours to have five minutes to respond to the concerns of the neighbors, sir. Uh, sorry, can you repeat that? No, I'm saying, Mr. Mr. Uh, I I'd just like to know, I guess, did your client consider doing a slope roof? Why they're they're coming in at point three eight of a meter above a a flat roof? Did they not consider a slope roof?
It's possible to do that, but I don't see the height being any different. Right? Um. We we're we're hun- we're under the um what's allowed uh as far as the height of the building and just a bit over uh, you know, the the flat roof. So but putting a uh uh I, we can go with the slope roof and 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 be at the nine point five and and the building will be higher. So I I don't see the difference between a flat roof and a and a slope roof. And and but the 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 owner will will consider it.
Well.
I think in the building.
They're here, they're here before us for an application. This is decided on today for a flat roof, so they're they're obviously not considering it. But the issue is, um, and I believe that that wasn't, I had my my initial review before hearing the people today, that they were against the, they really didn't think they uh the flat roof was was uh not what they wanted, and then there was more impact uh to on them. I believe that was my review of the letters as a whole, uh not just with the speakers. Um, so anyway, please, please continue that you have your five minutes. So let it start, uh go back and reset the clock. And you can uh give us your rebuttal to what you've heard.
Um, I I I understand, you know, what what the neighbors are 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 saying. But uh to me, it a slope. But, uh, to me, it, a sloped roof or a flat roof is, is, is not going to affect the, the height of the building. I think their, their main complaint is, is on the second story. And we, we've, uh, basically designed a building that is, you know, um, designed as per the bylaw other than those two things and, and, and minor, minor revision. You know? But a- again, the, 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 the owner, um, you know, could look at, um, uh, adding a, a, a sloped roof. If, if that would suffice everybody.
Okay. I understand. And so are you, are you, are you saying you're prepared to defer the application? I don't understand. You have an, you're an application here for a flat roof. So you have an application for a flat roof. But anyway, I don't want to interrupt you. You have
To me, I, I,
to respond to the thirty minutes of concerns you heard from the neighbors, so. But what do you mean they'll consider a flat roof, sloped roof? They're before us with an application here for, for a, for a, uh, flat roof and we spent last forty minutes listening to this application. So anyway, just please continue your presentation.
Um, I mean, my presentation basically finished.
Okay.
Uh, I don't know if, uh, the tenant, uh, the owner's here with me. I mean, she can, um, add to it if, uh,
No, I, we have one speaker. You're, you're, you're the representative.
Okay.
Uh, let's just see, committee members, any questions for, uh, the agent, uh, or for any of the neighbors or someone ready for a motion? And, uh, please provide comments. Yeah, we're at, Penny, having trouble hearing you. Can you please maybe put up your?
I know, right? It's a room. Uh, can you comment? Can you hear me now?
Perfect.
Okay, uh, east elevation drawing. I have some questions about these numbers in the variances.
Yes.
That's one correct. Thank you. Uh, so the question is, is the parapet not included in the height? Because your, your six point eight eight meters height is from established grade to flat roof, but not the parapet.
Yes.
This will not include her, correct?
No, um, that is, uh, would be considered the height of the building, which we are under.
Okay, so the parapet, parapet, which is, I can't tell you where this is, it looks like about sixteen inches at the front, is not included in your height?
Yes.
Okay, and then next.
For the flat roof.
Pardon?
Not for the flat roof.
Yeah, I'm just saying for the variances, I just wanted to make sure that it was covered properly. Um, and then the next question has to do with floor to ceiling height on, on the first floor.
Yes.
You, you have here ten foot ten, uh, sorry, ten foot two inches height for the ceiling.
That's from floor, from finished floor, first floor to finish, um, floor and the second floor.
Right, so then given the floor assembly, that, that floor height would be nine foot two inch.
Around nine feet, yeah.
Yes, okay. And nine foot two, uh, so that's about a, uh, there's a foot difference there and your actual height increases a foot. So it looks, it sounds to me like you're actually one foot difference is result because of the floor, floor height.
Yes.
Okay, so it's, it's trying to achieve a nine foot two inch border ceiling height on the first floor is what's causing everything to go beyond to that twelve, to that twelve inch extra, which is the point three three meters.
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to know what was bumping everything up. It seems it's the interior or to sit and I just wanted to make sure I was reading that drawing correctly. Thank you.
Yes, but I have point three three. Actually, it's point three eight, not point three three, right? Not that that makes a big difference, but, um, okay, Mr. So Mr. Bellisimo, you have the answers to your question. So what is it? The first floor height is nine, nine feet or the ceiling?
Yes.
And you said the second floor height?
It's about eight feet.
Okay, okay, thanks. Just wanted to clarify what you said. Okay, um, any other questions for, uh, the agent or any of the neighbors? And if no such, no more questions, if someone's ready to weigh in with a motion? Thank you.
Mr. Taylor? Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. From listening to the concerns of, of the neighbors, uh, my, my belief is that, uh, the concerns are related to the impact of what is proposed relative to what is on the property right now. Um, and, and, and there's no doubt about it. Everything we heard about being taller and more shading and less privacy. All are true. But our primary consideration as a committee is assessing the impact of variances proposed relative to what is permitted as of right. So when we look at this case, we're talking about a floor space index of less than seven meters squared, larger than the bylaw permits and a height of point three eight meters taller than what is permitted. I believe both of those variances are minor and that they meet the other tests under the Planning Act. And I therefore move approval subject to urban forestry condition two.
Okay, there are no other conditions, uh? And we didn't, uh, and planning did not weigh in on this matter, right? Okay, do you have a second for that motion? Okay, uh, no second for that motion and I need that.
I'll, I'll second it. But I mean, you can look at it another way. For the sake of those minor measurements there, they could not be here, right? So I, I kind of think we're being misled, especially with respect to the FSI and this phantom garage storage space. Um, but Mr. Taylor makes his, his point, which probably the applicant could have made as well. And, and if I may, I share, uh, Mr. Potter's concerns. However, to be honest, if this application was for a zero point five five FSI, my inclination would still be to recommend approval. I, I, I don't think it's tangibly different, my mind anyway.
Yeah, in, in my, in my mind, as I sort of mentioned, it's sort of like the, you know, the mansion in Forest Hill and, you know, whether they're living on the third floor and people, neighbors are looking and see cracks of light because someone's turned it into a study. If it's already there and the massing's there and it's not changing, does it really matter? My position on this matter, once we're now they're weighing and having a discussion is, um, I do not believe, I'm, I believe, uh, there's some disingenuity. I don't know if that's the right word of disingenuous, uh, and I was gonna, I was gonna abstain if I didn't, wasn't required to break a tie. That was going to be my position on this matter. Any other comments by anybody else here? As, uh, I, I agree, um, that there is a bigger, bigger impact here and perhaps something could have been worked out. There is a bit, uh, in the issue of the slope. And I agree with what Mr. Taylor says. It's compared to what's there, not compared to what's permitted. But there is these issues about, well, if they were that close, why are they even here? So that's just my position and, uh, I don't make motions, so I'll throw it back up. So we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Taylor. I'm not sure whether Mr.
I'm, I'm gonna second, but I want my comments on record too, I guess.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion. It's been seconded. All in favor? Okay, uh, the, uh, motion fails, I guess. Do we have a new motion? And I see there's two possible motions, not just one.
Uh, Danny, but this one would like to move for approval for variance number one, not variance number two, subject to conditions by forestry.
Okay, so just the FSI of one percent and not the flat roof height? Okay, that's interesting. Um, motion, but that's a motion, I guess, subject, obviously, to urban forestry as well. Do we have a second for that motion? There was seconded for that motion. Someone's going to bring my note. Ms. Rad, Ms. Reddick, you second Mr. Bellisimo's motion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, that motion carries four to one. The application, uh, is, uh, variance one of, uh, one percent uh, and variance two is, is refused. Okay, thank you, members, and thank you to all the neighbors. I trust if you've been following along, so just to uh, clarify after three motions, what's been approved is a one percent increase in FSI. The point four six and variance two has been refused. And, uh, thank you for everyone for their, uh, participation involvement, Mr. Clark and all the neighbors. Thank you. Okay, uh, perhaps is the time for a ten minute break? We've been at this almost, well, an hour and a half, but it seems longer. Okay, how about we take a ten minute break? Return at nice round three thirty. I don't, we having a vote on that or let's just, yeah, okay. Thank you. There we go. There we go. Okay, the next application item number twenty four is six Orchard Crescent. It's a for a two story rear addition with three variances. We have a cover letter and nothing else whatsoever. Other than urban forestry is yes, looking for conditions one and two, but nothing else whatsoever. Speaker for this application is Jay Smith.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Jay Smith, agent for Six Orchard Crescent.
Okay, anything you'd like to let the committee know, very straightforward application?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd be happy to answer and answer any questions if the committee has any.
Okay, yeah, no, nothing other than you're okay with urban forestry, other than that, no communication with city departments or neighbors?
That's right. Thank you.
Okay, members, any questions for Mr. Smith or someone ready to weigh in with a motion?
Motion to approve this application. I find it consistent with the four tests subject to urban forestry conditions one and two.
Thank you, Ms. Riddick, seconded for that motion. Mr. Taylor, thank you. All in favor? Unanimous approval. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, next application is item number twenty five. One oh two Vale Crest. And drive the application to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage, a previous COA file. Approved, and that was June twenty twenty one, June twenty fourth approved. Six variances for lot coverage, FSI setbacks and can't read my writing, but height, sorry. And again, when this application, we don't have anything other than the previous decision on this matter. Sorry. There is missing they have they got those variances, but now they're missing. They need a variance for FSI. They had approval at point five seven at committee, and they now need point five eight, an additional. Looks like about fourteen fifteen square meters. The agent is Addison Millen Price. Agent for the applicant. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and fellow committee members.
This is Addison Millen Price.
Yeah, this is Addison Milton Price of Design Plan Services located at nine hundred, the small suite three hundred.
Okay, so I just saw it's David Ingleman.
Yes, my colleague David Ingleman was previously the agent, but I am acting in his team.
Okay, that that gets rid of that confusion. So very straightforward. You you came to committee, you got variances, and now you need one more. You already received point five seven. You need one more. Zero point one. As you're added to your floor space, it's about fifteen additional square feet. You care to explain why that is the case?
Yeah, absolutely. There was a change in the design of the house that resulted in an increase of living space. And therefore, we have this application to slightly increase the FSI that was previously approved.
Okay.
In the previous design, the height of the garage was significantly higher to accommodate a car lift. The car lift is no longer included in the design of the garage, which allowed the second floor to be extended to fill in the area previously used by that area in the garage.
Okay, with with no impact on the massing of the property.
There are minor alterations.
Okay, so it's not just interior. It's actually resulted in some change, but obviously no, there's no human fraud. We don't have anything else on file on this matter, either from city staff or neighbors. So just trying to clarify. Members, any questions for Mr. Millen Price? And if none, is someone ready to weigh in with a motion? Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Chair, I'm satisfied the variance requested meets the four tests. It's a very slight adjustment from what we approved a little over a year ago. Or a little less than a year ago.
Yeah.
So I move approval subject to urban forestry conditions one and two.
Thank you, sir. Seconded for that motion. Any, but listen, Mr. Bellissimo, thank you, Danny, all in favor unanimous approval. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
You too. Okay, next application, item number twenty six, twenty two Winsland.
Yes, hello, it's.
Sorry, sir, just want to hang on for a second. Twenty two Winsland Drive, Onester East Side Edition. And one variance coverage, very slight, point zero four. I can't believe you have to come here for that. For two point five meters over, I have in my notes. There's got to be some de minimis, and in any event, you provide us with photos and six letters of support in the additional materials, very handsome looking property. Welcome, Mr. Bunker. It's not Mr. Bunker.
No, it's Mr. Molinaro. Mr. Bunker is my architect is helping.
Okay, right. Welcome, Dante. Anything you'd like to let the committee know?
No, as I said, it's just a very small variance. My neighbor, I've got very nice neighbors. They like me and and you know, it's it's just extending the kitchen, basically.
It's too bad you have to be here for like, anyway, what can I say, two and two and a half meters? Members, any questions or we have I have a motion?
Danny Bellissimo is ready to weigh in with a motion. This is a bungalow design with a small addition to the kitchen, saving the building. Supported greatly and I move for approval, but if there are no conditions.
No. Thank you, Mr. Bellissimo, seconded for that. Mr. Palmer, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Molinaro. Regards to Mr. Bunker. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next application is item number twenty seven fifty six Parker Avenue.
Hello, Scott Petrie, agent for the client.
Yeah, okay, so just wanted to. This is actually a second story addition above the existing dwelling with four variances. And again, nothing. They've put us, you know, four in a row that are really easier. So the speaker, again, you're the only speaker, Mr. Pet Petrie?
I believe so.
Okay, like to advise the committee of anything or just?
Nothing untoward. I mean, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Members, any questions for Mr. Petrie or a motion, please?
I'm ready to move a motion. I'll move for approval. Variance is requested meet the four tests in the planning act. No conditions.
Okay, thank you. Seconded for that. Mr. Taylor, thank you. All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, you have your approval.
Brilliant. Thank you. Have a great weekend.
You too. Okay, we're moving over to item number twenty eight, sixty eight Haverson Boulevard. And this is an application to legalize and maintain the new dwelling with attached rear garage that is currently under construction, a previous COA application. Approved. A second story addition above the existing dwelling, a two story rear addition and a rear detached garage with variances relating to floor space index length that lot coverage of a facility structure and side yard setback of a facility structure. We now have seven variances. Just to legalize and maintain, we have letter of opposition from sixty six. We have an order to comply. The letter from sixty six is a three page letter with pictures. And in the additional materials, we have a letter from the agent. Francis La Pointe, the architect. Explaining the situation that caused this wall to come down and be can now considered a new build and a whole discussion concerning that. So we do have one speaker other than the applicant or agent, Mr. Ramos from sixty six right next door. As I said, we have we have his letter. Okay. So perhaps we can get Mr. The agent's letter from the additional materials on the board as he makes the presentation. Mr. La Pointe, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's Francis La Pointe, architect, I'm agent for the owners at sixty eight Haverson. As you described, the application before you is a result of an order to comply that was issued once it was established that because of rotting floor joists and rotting sill plates, the fifty percent of the walls, the existing walls that were meant to be remaining were deemed by the city to be have been altered sufficiently enough and to no longer qualify as remaining. The variances before you are simply for existing conditions of encroachments. There are very, very minor revisions to, I think, one of the side yard setbacks and the GFA of the building. I'm happy to answer any questions if the committee has any.
Right, and Mr. La Pointe, I guess this is occasion by virtue of the fact that no longer considered additions and considered new build, there's different performance standards and effect.
Correctly, these cities zoning by law dictates that if fifty percent of the existing walls remain, then the project is deemed a addition and renovation. Here, the city calculated that forty eight percent of the walls were remaining.
Okay. Okay, we have also the copy of the previous decision in the previous minutes. So let's, does anyone have any questions at this point for Mr. La Pointe? Mr. Taylor?
So I'd like to hear some justification from Mr. La Pointe on why we should entertain this application that proposes development on a city right of way in three or four instances.
Correct. Those developments in some cases are existing, and they're they're just to legalize the existing condition. So the northeast corner of the existing house encroaches onto city property. The foundation wall essentially is stone foundation wall that's been there since the nineteen twenties. Yeah, perhaps if you can enlarge that site plan and and right at the front there. And there's a can you enlarge it further, please, and show the front porch? There's a red line that represents the existing front porches, and the black lines represent the new front porches. It's not clear there. Someone could zoom in a bit better. So it's it's just, there we go. Thank you. So the red line is the existing front porch and the black lines below are the new front porch. It's a replacement porch, essentially. You can see the curving front property line. And I I suppose that initially this was a square lot. And through historical changes, the property line was appropriated by the city, a portion of it was appropriated, and the lot was curved. So you can see the northeast corner of the existing dwelling. About two feet by one foot is encroaching on the city property. And the other porches are also encroaching on city property, as all our neighboring porches along the street, by the way. This is a a consistent condition.
Could we could we see the on this plan? Can we see the garage at the back? To the left of this? There's another encroachment there I'd like to see or talk about.
So the garage at the back was if you zoom in there, you'll see that it's a point one two me millimeters or four inches over. I've already talked to the client and they they're happy to remove that encroachment if necessary. Just an error in construction. They were permitted as zero side yard setback at that point and through construction. The the owner is building himself with his father. It's not a professional construction company, so they're they're doing their best.
Thank you.
Okay, so while you were answering Mr. Taylor's question, I was having I was using the time to again review the name, the letter from the neighbor who is next going to be speaking, the next door neighbor. And before he does so, I just him want him and members to, you know, as I say in my opening speech, sir, we deal with planning issues. There's a lot of, it's a very long letter with lots of pictures. A pretty nightmarish situation dealing with the neighbor we now hear is doing it himself and not through a professional. So I'm in a lot, you know, I can allow you too much leeway, and there's also some issues of some serious allegations dealing with some other extraneous matter. Dealing with buildings, but like I don't think we need to hear about any of that stuff. We've read it. We have it in front of us. So please, sir, please try to wait. I understand there's a certain venting is is good, but this is not the place to to do it. Please try to you know, five minutes and please try to limit your comments to planning issues. Now, what's standing, I do not mean, and I certainly don't make light of any of these issues. What these pictures convey and what your descriptions convey, but it's not the right place for it. So sorry for that long introduction. I recall doing it on one or two other occasions. I'm having a big deja vu, but it is important, and please try to stick to planning. But without, with all due respect, I have respect for what you mentioned in your letters and showing your pictures. Okay, Mr. Ramos, welcome.
Not a problem. I'll do my best to keep it short and focus on the variances. Good afternoon, members of the committee.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Carlos Ramos, and I am the owner of sixty six Haverson Boulevard. I have lived on these premises for ten years. Our property is located right beside the applicant's property on the south side. The applicant's property is a corner lot, so we are the most directly affected by this project. We would like to object to the proposed variances and ask for your refusal of the applicant of the application. I have gone into great detail that I remember that I had experience with the applicants over the last year, as you did see in my opposition letter dated June the first. I will now summarize my my concerns. The intent and the purpose of the city zoning and by law codes for a new build are not maintained. Variance number one, the front porch and basement walkout do not meet the required minimum front yard setback of two point eight meters. Their front porch and stairs encroach into the city right of way by over ten feet, as was mentioned by by a member of the panel. Variance number two, the proximity of the proposed deck with the south side yard setback of zero point six eight meters is not conducive to me having some privacy in my backyard. Because they have decided to build this deck so close to the property line. The deck appears to have at least five steps. So even if they stand at the furthest part of the deck, they will be overlooking into my yard and over any fence that we put up. Variance is number three and four, the proposed porch and exterior stairs, like I mentioned earlier, affects the city's property. They plan on extending paths where they are allowed to build by extending into the city right away. Variance number five, I'm concerned with the projection of the roof eaves. As per their design, the soffit of the roof projects six inches from the wall plus at least another four inches for the eaves, which will cause a roof projection of at least ten inches well into the side yard than what is suggested in the zoning notice. I would, I would, I would like to propose a flat roof design in order to prevent this overhang into the side yard. Now, if the moderator completes show pages number four, which is pictures of of the of the properties. Then I will continue page number four, please. If you can zoom in on that. So this is, if you can see, this is our properties are very close together. And this is variance number seven. This is the one that extremely concerns me the most. There's only a south side yard setback of only zero point five five meters. Our homes are already very close together as it is in snow removal and water drainage has always been very difficult. There's a space of less than four feet in between the properties and in some areas even tighter. To give you an example, just opening my side door, it almost blocks the entire walkway. I'm also concerned with the proposed basement walkout in the front yard as I feel that the distance from the top of the stairs is too close to the property line, which will basically cause people to walk up between the two properties. It is important to note that the hedge and trees in the front lawn have already been removed, even though they still appear in their site plans. That hedge and trees created a natural barrier which which would have forced someone to walk around the properties. Now they can freely walk across my property, so I feel that even if you put a walkway there, people's natural tendency will be to take the shortest path, which means most people will probably be crossing to my property. I feel that this design of this basement walkout is insensitive to my family and myself. If you can scroll down, you'll see a bit more of the pictures on page five. You'll see, you'll see that the hedge and the trees that were there no longer there and you know, created a natural barrier. If you keep scrolling down a bit. If you can scroll down a bit, please. And scroll scroll a tiny bit more. You can see there with that board is that's going to be their basement walkout. So it's basically. And scroll, scroll a tiny bit more, you, you can see there with that board, that's gonna be their basement walkout, so it's basically, you know, going right into my property, which I think it's very insensitive uh for many reasons. Um, let's see now, um. Okay, now, if you can uh scroll over to page nine, I'll try to wrap up as quick as possible, because I know my time's coming up. I'd like to know that there was uh fifteen-foot trees along the property line in the backyard, as you can see in the site plans, which have already been removed by them, leaving me with no privacy, my backyard is currently wide open and can be seen from the street. I ask that you also make a condition to have those trees replaced. Um, and also just to close out now, I know that this panel is not here to discuss building code, but the proposed drawings are not being considered for a new dwelling. The windows on the south side should not be allowed because of the proximity to the property line, a redesign of the space should be required. I would like to stress that this is not a renovation, this is a new build, and has already been confirmed by the chief building official. Yes, they went to the committee of adjustments in the past to give variances, but that was for a renovation that fell under grandfather laws. Now they are asking you to legalize something that they did not, they're asking you to legalize something that they did that contravened building code and bylaws. They have turned down the existing house, and now they are trying to maintain the advantages that they would have had at the renovation. I would also like to comment on the architect's uh comments, all evidence that he points in his covered letter. Uh, should, if you look at the dates on his evidence, they are weeks after their permit was already stopped on October fourteenth, which is when their permit was stopped and they were asked by the building officials to apply for a new build uh permit. Um, this is a great opportunity for this committee to make them follow the current minimum zoning setbacks, as we should not be setting a precedent for others to follow. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you very much, Mr. Ramos. Um, any questions for Mr. Ramos, panel members? If no questions, uh, let's put it, give it back over to Mr. Lapointe. Um, also, there's no urban forestry condition on this application? I don't see one, did anyone else see one?
No, there isn't.
Okay, okay. Okay, let's go back to uh, miss, perhaps that's something Mr. uh Lapointe can answer as well. Mr. Lapointe?
Uh, sure, thank you. Um, I, I, can you hear me? Yeah, so I, I, I'd like to be as sensitive as possible at this issue, I certainly, I, I, like you, were not part of the uh discussions between the neighbors. Um, I, when, when I saw Mr. Ramos's letter, I asked my client to provide me with a response to each point. Uh, and her responses, uh, as, as far as I'm concerned, uh, were all reasonable, there were issues, uh, they resolved them. Um, Mr. Ramos has a series of incorrect facts, uh, the permit, the work was stopped on December twenty-fourth, uh, two thousand and twenty-one, with the order to comply, there was negotiations with the city. The client uh hired an engineer to uh respond to the issues that the city were, were, were showing up, which was the rotting wood essentially. Um, you know, the, the variances before you are for the existing conditions. Uh, Mr. Ramos is concerned about the, the width of the alley between the two buildings. Uh, it's actually wider. The stone wall was reduced by four to six inches, the width is wider than it was before. If, if you, if the uh moderator can bring up the site plan, you will see that on the site plan by the surveyor, it's been described. Uh, furthermore, the, the point-five-five meters at the southeast corner of my client's house, the setback, is equal to the point-five-five meters at the neighbor's northwest corner. It's the same setback. Um, the neighbor's complaining about things that, uh, you know, zoom in on that site plan, you'll see a dotted line that represents the outline of the foundation ledge that's been removed. So it's, it's wider than it was before, so I don't know what else to say. With respect to his concern about uh pedestrian uh crossing onto his property, um, you know, people are not allowed to do that. Uh, my client will put up a fence or a hedge and a sidewalk that leads to the street. Uh, and these are just, just normal things, really. Um, the deck at the, the, the deck and the, the variance for the deck at the extension of the rear, uh, as, as you know, um, when you extend an existing building, you can extend it uh in line with the existing setbacks, and that's what's occurred. And only because, you know, the, the gentleman mentioned that this is a new build, it's not a new build, the city has created a new term called new house by renovation to recognize the situation. The outline of the existing foundations are remaining, the encroachments at the front are very similar to the encroachments of the neighbor and all of the neighbors on this street. The only difference here is that there's a curving front yard, uh, front, front lot line essentially. And, and this building is, is historical, it's been here since prior to all of these issues and the zoning bylaws. So I, I understand the neighbor's concerns. I, I reminded my client to be a good neighbor and to be a good contractor, and I hope that going moving forward, uh, that they'll continue to do that. But as I said, I, I've read the response from my client to all of the concerns from the neighbor. And yes, things happen, and yes, they resolve them almost immediately, if not the next day. So it, it's just, it, really, the issue here is, the city of Toronto, a historic city, uh, had allowed in the past a sort of two-foot side yard setbacks, and it makes every project that has a two-foot setback difficult. This is not the first time, I, I've experienced this on projects, uh, it's not the first time and it's not the last time it's gonna occur. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, any questions for um Mr. Lapointe?
Uh, Danny Bledisma has a quick question. Uh, the stairs at the front, which go down to the basement, uh, they're accessible from the neighbor's side, uh, and not from the corner's side. I'm confused.
Well, there'll be a sidewalk that will lead to the street. The, uh, pedestrian will turn ninety degrees.
I haven't finished my, I haven't finished my statement. Uh, those stairs could have been designed to access the street at the corner instead of coming from the neighbor if you flipped everything around. And my question is, are those stairs impacting on any of the variances? They causing variances?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you.
Port itself is the variant.
It's just a porch, but not the stairs to the basement.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any, uh, any more questions? And if none, is someone ready to weigh in with a motion?
Um, no, I've, I've got a question. Um, just, can you refer back to the site plan again? I, I just wanna be clear on what we're looking at here. Can you bring the site plan? Yeah, up. So this curved line, is that the property line, sir?
That is the, correct, that is the co, the current property line.
So all of these sort of red lines beyond that, the five feet, six inches, the three feet, six inches, that's all of the encroachment onto the city property, correct?
The red lines represent the existing porches. The black lines below uh are the new porches, so you can see that the existing stairs were closer to the street than the new stairs. The black lines below them are the new stairs.
Okay, so sorry.
The red lines represent the existing.
Yeah, I get that.
And the black lines are the new ones.
So there's still a huge encroachment into the city property?
It's a replacement stair, correct, a replacement porch and a replacement stair.
Okay, I don't know that we have jurisdiction to approve an encroachment onto another property.
I, I suggest that you do as it's listed as a variance.
No, the committee only has authority to deal with up to the lot line. Anything beyond the lot line, you will have to get an encroachment agreement with transportation services.
Thank you.
The committee has no jurisdiction on city property.
And if I could add to that, uh, we have asked, uh, the city, planning, building department, expect inspections, et cetera, uh, to expedite that process, to make requests, get comments from transportation, and he refused.
Okay, can we just go back to the rear of the property where the gray area is, where it says proposed two-story addition?
Yeah.
So this is, for our purposes, is existing right now, is that right?
Correct, this, this proposed addition was approved in the previous committee of adjustment decision.
So the variance is requested, do they have anything to do with this part here?
No, it's because the, 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 the house, uh, with respect to its south lot line, has shifted a little bit. So the southeast corner is closer than permitted, so that's being recognized now. So the southeast corner is at point-five-five, it always had, it actually was at point-four-five. Yeah, because they removed the stone, it's now point-five-five. And it's an existing condition, it's existing stone foundation that's being recognized by this variance, as are other variances.
Okay, thank you.
Again, to, I guess my understanding is you were here at committee for additions, but when the wall fell down because of rot, whatever, it's now a new house by renovation and the performance standards are changed, so that's why we have these, these variances, correct?
Correct.
So you have a depth variance, you have a length variance, you, you didn't have those before. They were different, again, the.
No, we don't, I don't know, you're, you may be looking at the old variances, currently we have a.
Hey, oh yeah, I'm looking at the old applications, so we had that, but now we have a whole new set of variances.
Relating to existing building and existing construction, and, and the replacement of existing porch.
Well, whatever you were gonna do before is now considered a different performance, because it's now a new house by renovation, it's not a series of additions.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Uh, members, any questions? Uh, uh, we'll take it back into committee now for a uh, for a decision, and please uh provide comments on this one.
Um, Danny Bledisma would like to provide comments and, and, you know, one motion now, uh. Seems to me that what he's saying is this was approved, it's under construction, and he's back because of the calculation formula, because of the old rot. So I, my interpretation of what I'm seeing here, irrespective of the, the uh um, need for an encroachment agreement, which is handled by council, not by us, and goes through transportation services, part of the case. Uh, we're just approving the variances that will trigger those uh encroachment agreements. So I, I find the variances are minor in nature, um, and move for approval. Uh, is there a, I don't believe there's a condition by forestry, is there? No.
No.
No, thank you.
Okay, we have a second for Mr. Bledisma's motion. Okay, then Mr. Bledisma's motion fails, so I have a new motion. Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I believe the absence of an encroachment agreement, um, is uh fatal to this application, and I think we have no alternative but to uh recommend approval, uh refusal. And uh, that is what I move, refusal.
Okay, thank you, sir, second for that mode. Is Reddick, thank you. Any comment? Okay, uh, all in favor? Motion carries four to one. Mr. Mr. Listen, well, you're, you're opposed. You have your volume, you're, you're on mute. Sorry?
I, I'm, I'm, I'm moving, I'm agreeing with Mr. Taylor, I'm gonna agree with you.
Okay, okay, you changed your position then, okay, thank you. Okay, so it's unanimous now. Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so thank you, um, to Mr. Lapointe, and thank you to Mr. Ramos. Uh, application's been refused. Okay, next application is item number twenty-nine, uh, number eight Ripplewood Drive. Okay, great name. Um, this is to legalize and maintain the as-built, it should be as-built, not as-build, just a little typo. Rear yard cabana and covered areas, and there are uh three variances uh triggered thereby. And uh, I think we have a cover letter, a previous decision, five letters to support, supporting images, which uh absolutely beautiful is my comment. Um, and uh, no one here in opposition. The speaker is Franco Spagnolo, agent for the applicant. Hello, sir.
Yes, uh, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, committee member, from Spagnolo Inc., I'm the owner, representative. Uh, the application is to, you know, the existing cabin at the rear of the property, which would be uh northeast corner, along with the flanking street, soft landscaping. Um, these were brought to enter submitting for pool permit application. Uh, we're seeking relief for the three variances uh that, uh, that you see. Um, the, just a, a couple of quick comments for each, each variance. Um, regarding the, the first variance of side yard flanking, um, the proposal does comply with the sixty percent landscaping, but does not comply with the soft landscaping requirement. Um, we believe it's minor, it's only driven by the presence of the stone walkway that connects the driveway to the front of the house. Um, and the main point here is because it's a flanking street of, alas, the, a private property. So if you take into consideration the city property, there's an additional approximately point-four-two square meters of grass and green space and trees, so visually, um, uh, there is a tougher separation between the stud and the bylaw and. Um, and regarding number two.
Yes, sir, is there something you can improve here? It's been, it's getting hard to listen to you, you're breaking up the whole way through, I've been able to listen. But is there, can you pick up your phone or move closer to your whatever? I don't know, we're having problems.
Oh, okay, is that, is this any better?
Little better, yes.
Okay, so sorry about that.
This is an as-built, so this, this thing got built, or is already built, I think, can you put up the pictures, it's quite beautiful? Uh, can we see the picture staff, moderator, while uh Mr. Spagnolo is uh, is talking? Thank you.
Yeah, okay, no, no, yeah, so, sorry about that. So yeah, uh, my base, first, my base point is just for the flanking street. Uh, there is uh additional green space on city property, uh, about seventy-eight-point-four-two square meters that acts, you know, that increases the green space. Um, regarding variance number two, which is, which is the side yard setback. Um, the side yard setback for an accessory structure is actually two-point-two meters. Um, because of the, of the required minimum frontage of twenty, of twenty-one. Um, we're at twenty-two-point-five. Um, you know, i- the bylaw does state that if, if the required frontage was at twenty-one, the side yard setback would only be zero-point-three meters. So it's uh, it's quite a difference just because of that small portion.
Again, I, I think it's, it's a pretty minimal thing, it's m- more appropriate to tuck it in the corner anyway. So I know, no one's affected, no one's complaining. Uh, again, as I said, we don't have any complaints from neighbors on this. Um, committee members, do you need to hear more? It's as-built, it's wonderful, it's, it's off by inches, uh, matter of interpretation for the soft landscaping, and it's uh, it's quite, uh, quite nice, I don't think anyone's gonna complain that you're, you are at landscaping on the city boulevard as well, so.
And, and one, and one last thing, we have the, uh, all the adjacent neighbors have, have signed the letter of support to which, which, uh, which were submitted to the committee.
Yeah.
Danny Bledisma would like to, yeah, the motion is allowed?
Yep.
Um, normally I would be concerned about the soft landscaping, but I agree with the applicant that you look at the overall property, there's a lot of landscaping on the other uh fronts. So I would have liked to move for approval, find the variances are minor in nature, I believe there are no conditions.
Yep, correct, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bledisma. A second here for that. Ms. Reddick, thank you. All in favor? Okay, you have your approval unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Spagnolo. Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, next application, uh, thirty has been deferred. Thirty-one, I think we said this, Mr. Binkowski, we're proceeding with that one, correct? Staff, members?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I have, I have in my notes that that one was actually deferred.
Okay, thirty-one, uh, was that Jonathan's? We, okay, we did defer in that one, right? Okay. Okay, sorry. I just hadn't crossed it out on my sheet. Okay, so the next application is, and we're now on to, uh, talking about deferrals, we're now on to for the rest of the afternoon, the remaining items are all i- items that were previously deferred and are back uh for, to us. So the next application is item number thirty-two, five thirty-five, the East Mall. And this is an application, uh, that was deferred in the June twenty-four, twenty-twenty-one uh hearing. It's an application to convert the existing basement store, lock it, locker slash storage room into six apartment dwellings, resulting in two variances to the bylaw. We have the material from the previous hearing. We have the material from the previous hearing. We have the zone zoning waiver and we have a summary of discussion that rental housing and what being requested. So I'm not sure what the uh, how that relates to our approval uh. These, they gave a summary when they they requested to be put back on agenda, they give some discussion about what's going on with the rental housing department. So perhaps we'll hear more about that uh from the agent. Um, and the agent is either Musa Ayada or Ian Phillips.
Uh, here's Musa, uh, good afternoon, Mister Chair and Committee. Um, we have uh two variances. Uh, first one is the minimum required lot area for the dwelling unit. Uh, uh, that's the first one. And the second, uh, the housing, uh, they requested to have the uh bicycle parking to be indoor. We don't have a space for that, so we created it uh an outdoor. Uh, we we already um had a discussion also regards to the use of the indoor. Administer space and we carried a survey with the uh building resident. And and they choose what to use that uh indoor administer space. Um, and uh, the commission also requested to have uh an indoor storage space uh. Because we are converting all the existing um indoor storage uh at the basement to residential suites. We tried to find a place in the building to uh provide the storage, uh, but we were unable to find any spaces. We explained to the housing that uh every suite has at least two closets that they can use. And even the existing locker or storage spaces, uh, half of them, they are empty, uh, some of them. Uh, used for bicycle and we provided uh an outdoor with a shed actually uh for the bike, bicycle wrecking. So I'm ready to answer any questions.
Okay, so my just question, just to explain variance number one, uh, there's a minimum building standard, which, you know, compared to the size of condos today is quite. Laughable because condos are getting smaller. I don't know how many, one thirty-nine square meters is how many square feet? And you're just slightly, you're only eight square meters below that, which is is still a.
Correct.
A a suitable apartment. Uh, you know, how many square feet is that is one hundred and thirty-one square meters? Someone quickly or?
Um. I'm just.
Sorry?
Fourteen hundred and fifty.
Wow, well, there are condo units being sold and that are five hundred square feet, so I think it's, that's very, very generous still. And the other vacant, the other variance is the uh, the bicycle parking. So um, any further questions, committee members, or is uh, we're ready to weigh in with the motion?
Danny, but this was ready to weigh in for motion, no further questions. Uh, this is existing building. The additions are within the existing, uh, so I don't think there's any negative impact on the neighborhood or the area, so I'd like to move for approval. Variances, wanting to.
Okay, thank you, sir. Second for Mister Bellisimo's motion. Mister Palmer, thank you. All in favor? Unanimous approval. Thank you, uh, Mister Ayad. We'll see you again.
Thank you so much, sir. Thank you so much, sir.
Sorry, Mister Chair. Before we go on to item number thirty-three, I just want to bring to your attention that there are two speakers registered for item thirty-three, a Bill Dalton and Andre Griffith. Um, they're both representing the owner and I had advised that only one of them would be able to speak. But the traffic engineer Andre would be available for questions if the committee has any questions for them.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, this is a matter deferred from June third twenty-one hearing. Uh, the purpose of this application is quite the mouthful. It's to rid parking for the existing hotel. On a different lot during phase construction of proposed hotel. Addition to the existing hotel and above-grade parking garage and a parking reduction, a previous COA application approved variances for the existing. Crown Plaza Hotel, a new Hyatt Hotel, relating to sideyard setbacks, parking and loading spaces and soft landscaping. An additional COA application approved the variance permitting a car rental in conjunction with the hotel use, I remember that. Okay, and so we have uh three variances. Um, transportation is no objection. I yeah, follow, they provided us with a very fulsome, three-page report and they conclude that they're, uh, they have no conditions and no objection.
Correct.
Or do they have conditions?
Nope, no conditions.
They have conditions or no?
No.
Okay, but they give a, you know, pretty, uh, very, I had noted very fulsome explanation from them. As to the history and we have the materials in the previous hearing when this matter was adjourned, so I'll turn it over to uh Bill Dalton from IBI Group.
Great, thank you. So good afternoon Chairman Clark and committee members. My name is Bill Dalton and I am a planner with IBI Group. As you're having a full day, I will be brief. So we represent Mango Hotels Carlson, Inc., the owner of the lands municipally known as thirty-three Carlson Court. Which currently contains the twelve-story Crown Plaza Hotel. The site is located northeast of the Dixon Road and Apple Drive intersection and is minutes away from Toronto Pearson International Airport. As its front door to front door travel distance is approximately two kilometers. As noted, the committee granted a deferral of this matter at its June third twenty twenty-one meeting. And our client asked to secure this deferral as they needed more time to reassess their hotel expansion plans. That were approved by the committee in July twenty nineteen due to the ongoing pandemic. So since the deferral was granted, our client revised their July twenty nineteen committee-approved hotel expansion plans. To now include in phases one and two, construction of the new Hyatt Hotel. In phase three, construction and completion of a one-story above-grade parking structure that was previously three stories. While the fourth and final phase includes the completion of the Hyatt Hotel. Construction and completion of the uh Crown Plaza Hotel addition and related site improvements uh that are shown on the drawings that were submitted to the committee in March twenty twenty-two. And prepared by Chamberlain Architects Services Limited. So in order to provide for the revised hotel expansion, our client does require the three minor variances that were reconfirmed by city building staff. By way of their March fifteenth zoning review, that were in turn summarized in our submission and detailed in the committee's May twenty-fifth public notice. For this matter and include a variance to reduce the total amount of parking at full buildout in support of the revised hotel expansion. And two technical variances to address parking during the phase construction of the revised hotel expansion. So in support of these variances, our client also retained IBI Group transportation planners to prepare the parking justification report that is dated March twenty twenty-two. In turn, Luigi Nicolucci, manager with the City of Toronto Development Planning and Review Transportation Services Division, issued a memorandum on June third. That reviews the information we have provided uh in support of the variances and concluded, based on the foregoing, his department has no objections to the variances being requested. And in addition to the city's transportation services memorandum, councillor Ford, and now a member of the provincial parliament, has submitted a letter in support of this application. And as you are aware, no one has submitted a letter of concern or objection to these variances. As such, it's our submission, the aforementioned variances are minor, meet the intent of the City of Toronto official plan and zoning bylaw. Are desirable and appropriate for the site and represent good planning principles. And I'd like to thank you for your time and consideration of this application. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mister Dalton. My position would be, uh, who, you know, I would defer to the expertise of uh the city's transportation department, who have certainly weighed in on this matter. And given it their support, so who am I to uh quibble with that? Now, what's next, you know? Yes, I guess Uber is now uh. Parking requirements, certainly parking standards in condos, new condos has certainly dramatically changed, so. It seems somewhat reasonable. Um. Members, any questions for Mister Dalton or someone ready to weigh in with a motion?
Danny, but this was ready to weigh in for motion. Michael, you just gave away my presentation. Transportation Service is being okay with that. These are consequences of needed construction stages, so. I I feel that we need to approve this to get the work going, so I move for approval. I believe there are no conditions.
Thank you. Uh, second for Mister Bellisimo's motion. Mister Taylor, thank you. All in favor? Unanimous approval. Thank you, Mister Dalton. Have a good afternoon.
Great, thank you. You too. Take care.
Next application is item number thirty-four. Well, that was the one um. Okay, that was the one we decided we're proceeding with the. Correct staff wanted resolved and Mister Mackay said, well, you know, he's prepared to uh, to go ahead and make his, uh, take his chances that he. He's correctly identified. Now it's done, there's been a change in the plans. It's now gonna be a smart center or whatever. Okay, so. Fourteen eighty Jane Street.
We, we just received this afternoon um new correspondence from community planning staff um. I'm, I'm, I think Paul has it, but I guess while um.
I can't, first of all, it's so fuzzy on that screen. Um, we're gonna have to read it to us or?
I can read it, Mister Chair.
Good on my Mac.
It says planning staff.
The effect of this new. So first of all, is Mister Mackay aware of this man, this planning uh report that you just received?
Uh, Mister, uh, I believe this is the confirmation I, we spoke to before where. We provided revised plan to address their comments on the parking matter and they still requested a deferral, which we then spoke to. And would still like to proceed, so I don't think this changes anything, uh, Mister Chair.
Okay, yeah, when we spoke earlier, you had said um. Yeah, they, they. Their comments made sixteenth remain the same. They still feel that there should still be a deferral notwithstanding, uh, the revised. Uh, plan that you've submitted. Okay, so um. We're now aware of this, that that was something we already considered and we said, we're gonna proceed, right? So can you share that with us? Do we have that? Have we seen this memo?
I'm sharing it at the moment.
You told us about it, but we didn't see it, did we? Sorry?
The email that that we are referring to, that came from planning.
That's it, it's just the email. There, there isn't a report, it's just that. Two line then, right, okay, okay. I see. Okay, so that's it. We have what we need. Okay, so uh, why don't you go ahead um with your presentation, sir, just uh, again, to introduce this to construct a new self-storage facility. Uh, new restaurant with associated drive-through. And you, you're, you're, you want to proceed and uh, this matter was previously deferred from the February tenth twenty twenty-two hearing. And there are four variances.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Uh, do we also, do we have Mister Metos? We didn't have him on the line earlier. Is he on the line now to deal with the substantive issue as opposed to the deferral?
Mister Chairman, we still do have um Mike Metos on the line. Uh, we haven't soundchecked him a second time after, after the deferral was being discussed. But we can definitely try uh Mister Metos.
Okay, so he wasn't here for the deferral, he may not, because I'd just like to know if he's here, I'm gonna be speaking.
I can, I can unmute him now just to check. Uh, Mister Matos, are you there, please?
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. I just, it's. Good for Mister Mackay to know that he's speaking and someone's gonna be speaking after him. So, thank you. Okay, go ahead, uh, Mister Mackay.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mister Chair, members of committee. Uh, if uh staff could uh put up my presentation that was provided. Um, as noted, this application is to develop the lands for a self-storage facility, uh, six stories by Smart Stop. Uh, in association with their partner, Smart Centers, uh, with a coffee shop, uh, with an associated drive, uh, drive-through. Uh, on the lands. Those uses, uh, as you can see, uh, are permitted in the zoning. Uh, the lands, uh, now that my presentation is up, are located on the uh west side of Jane Street, where the overpass over the rail corridor. Uh, starts, uh, so there is very limited uh, uh. Uh, public uh frontage per se at grade for this property along Jane Street. Um, the subject lands, we can go to the next slide. Are currently utilized for a uh, an industrial operation with outdoor storage, so we're cleaning up this property. Uh, through this redevelopment process. If we go to the next slide, please. As you can see by the uh, on the site plan, uh, the layout has, does have uh the building at these, at this. Uh, uh, storage building at the southern end of the property. And as I mentioned, the concern uh was that we had shown parking at the south side of that building. Staff were concerned with safety issues. And we, the additional site plan we showed uh could relocate that parking uh to the northwest corner. In that white area, sir, which is part of the property, but is not part of a development application per se. So we have room to maneuver in terms of addressing parking issues uh in terms of location with staff, and that's what we are trying to to show to them. Uh, next slide. In terms of the proposal, as you can see, it's a modern facility, uh, six stories in height, uh, similar to other uh proposals for self-storage. Uh, we have been through the site plan approval process and are nearing completion of that matter. Uh, with regards to the location, uh, sizing of the building and and general layout. As I said, it was only this last uh minor issue that came up at the last minute with staff, uh, with that sadly parking area. Uh, if we can go to the uh, uh, next couple of slides are the other elevations, so I won't take you through those. Uh, as I say that we've worked hard with diligently with staff to have those uh perfected and and brought forward today. With regards to the variances and uh perhaps uh we can skip over uh the summary, but there are uh four variances, one dealing with density. Uh, one time, point zero times density today, one point two five being requested. Um, obviously, the intent of that permission is to provide for an appropriate size and build form. Uh, in terms of the proposal, uh, it provides for an urbanization of lands to efficiently utilize them and optimize infrastructure. As uh required by city policy and provincial policy. We note that there is no maximum height here, so there's no issues in terms of that issue. And we believe that the uh proposed density meets the objectives uh and development criteria of the official plan. And there are no impacts uh associated with the intensification proposed. Next slide. As you can see in the uh, the proposal or in the next slide, or when it comes up, is that the committee of adjustment has approved throughout the city of Toronto. Uh, a number of variances for increased density associated with self-storage uses. So the request is not abnormal and in fact is is lower than all of these approvals that have been granted by the committee of adjustment and supported by city staff in the past. Next slide. With regards to the setbacks, obviously, uh, there are two setbacks at at issue. One is the front yard setback. And this really deals with the pinch point and maybe you can go um uh to the next slide, which shows the pinch points. There are two pinch points on this, one at the, because of the odd shape of the lands. We, and shown in green, uh, along Jane Street, that's the front yard setback, so it's the, just that corner piece of the building that is encroaches. Within to the front yard setback. And similarly, we have a pinch point on the west side against the rail corridor. Um, the majority of the building is outside of the setbacks and and therefore within the building envelope with exception of those two pinch points. And we don't believe those cause any undue impact, uh, and we believe they meet the intent purpose of the of the bylaw. Uh, next slide. With regards to parking, and this is the last item, uh, we have provided a parking justification study to transportation staff. Um, similar to other uh proposals for self-storage, uh, we are reducing the parking. As can be shown by the examples, uh, throughout uh the city, the parking ratios uh for self-storage are significantly lower. Uh, than uh required by the older bylaws. Uh, in this case, you can see that the parking ratio provided at point one seven per hundred square meters is actually the highest of those. Uh, identified through the study. And if you go to the next slide, uh, staff. Uh, you will see that, uh, again, committee of adjustment has approved, uh, numerous parking reductions. In uh line with what we're requesting today for self-storage facilities. So uh, in our uh respectful submissions, uh, the proposals, uh, proposed variances meet the uh test of the planning act. And I'd be happy to answer questions that committee may have and to respond to any comments from the public. Sorry for going over time, sir.
Thank you. So, yeah, so I I'm just been, while you were speaking, been reading some of the uh letters, a couple of opposition letters. It looks like uh when you rescheduled this, that uh councillor Nunziata did indeed hold a uh information meeting in March.
That's it, that is correct, sir.
Okay, and we have only very few letters from the public uh in our materials. Uh, we have materials in the previous hearing. And um, oh yeah, so next, we have another, we have a speaker. First, does anyone have any questions for Mister Mackay at this point? And if not, we'll hear from, there's another speaker, Mike Metos, who's with the Mount Dennis BIA.
Thank, thank you. Um, I'm, I'm from Mount Dennis, which is the neighborhood immediately to the south across the railway tracks. And if you were.
Sir, you're speaking on your own behalf or on behalf of the Mount Dennis BIA?
Uh, actually, I'm the president of the Mount Dennis Community Association. Uh, the BIA is a much smaller organization and located far to the south, whereas this affects. The majority of people in Mount Dennis because we use Jane Street to access the four hundred and four, four one highway.
Okay, just on my speaker's list, it says you're with the Mount Dennis BIA, so we should change that. You're here as speaking on behalf of the Mount Dennis uh. Yeah, thank.
If you're listening to Mister Mackay, did you hear any words at all about the driving? Yeah, thank you. If you're listening to Mr. Mackay, did you hear any words at all about the drive-through? Because I I didn't. There are two drive-throughs immediately south, a couple of kilometers south. One of them is accessed through Jane Park Plaza and is generally a non-issue. The second one is accessed directly from Western Road. And it causes a backup at the intersection of Rogers and Western Road, and that backup in Rush Hour extends and blocks Black Creek Drive, and it blocks westbound Rogers Road. It is a major inconvenience for people in the district.
This is to go into a drive-through and get into their drive-through restaurant?
Yes. And our objection to this request is that the drive-through restaurant has had, we believe, misleading numbers on the number of vehicles. I have seen, uh, restaurant associations say that a drive-through attracts from one hundred to two hundred vehicles an hour. And there is no indication in the documents I've seen where they are going to store that number of people while they're waiting for the for to get service. And the moment they back up onto Jane Street, there is basically a a traffic jam. In April, the TTC and the police organized an event, and there was a barbecue held at the FreshCo supermarket, which is immediately adjacent. And one of the people I spoke to there was the franchisee who operates the FreshCo. We asked if there was any consideration given to using the FreshCo entrance as it would be an excellent place to store vehicles using the drive, accessing the drive-through. And he said at no point did he have any discussions about this, or at least there had nothing had come of it. So our concern is that this drive-through is going to seriously impact southbound traffic on Jane Street. There is inadequate parking because traffic has said there is not enough parking by the regulation. And we do not think you should allow a drive-through to operate in a lot which is already identified as being inadequate for parking. And and that is our concern that this is gonna cause a situation similar to Western Road where rush hour traffic is seriously impeded by by the drive-through.
Okay, that's the, that's your submission?
That's my submission.
Thank you, sir. Sir, um. Again, I enough to take, see if the transportation, that they deal with this in there, um. Uh, right, okay. I'm just told in a second, um. So we'll have to, obviously, if he didn't address it, he can address it now in his rebuttal. So obviously, we'll hear from, uh, Mr. Mackay on that. Do we know what's going in there? Is it, uh, what type of a drive-through restaurant? Is it a, we? Have they determined perhaps? We'll we'll find that out from Mr. Mackay. Just didn't know if you're aware of that, sir. Mr. Metos, Metos?
Yeah.
Do you know who's going in there? Do we, have they identified who, uh, who's gonna be the drive-through tenant, or maybe they don't know yet?
I I saw nothing when I read the doc documents for the application.
Okay, well, perhaps Mr. Mackay knows, uh, they should only wish to have, uh, cars backed up waiting to get into the drive-through, I guess, but.
Well.
I guess it happens in West. What is, what's the drive-through at that Western Road, sir?
They're both Tim Hortons.
Okay.
And the one that's accessed through Plaza is not an issue. The one that has a direct connect to Western Road is an issue.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Thank you, sir. Anyone have any questions for, um, Mr. Metos? If not, let's go back to Mr. Mackay for his rebuttal in response to those issues.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, the reason why I did not raise any issues or comments regarding the coffee shop, and it is a a coffee shop that is proposed and documented, uh, in the submission materials, is that the variances do not relate to the coffee shop. We are providing sufficient parking as well as drive-through facilities for that drive-through facility. They are not subject to this variance. The parking reduction requested relates to the self-storage facility, as does the two items in terms of the setbacks and density. With regards to, um, the access point, uh, this is the only access point available to the site from Jane Street. There is, however, uh, a an access easement over the adjacent lands to the north, the the FreshCo site, uh, which, when they developed their out parcels, will be a potential connection in terms of further access. We have provided, uh, tra- traffic information and parking information regarding that facility, and staff have not raised any concerns with the operations of the drive-through. And as I mentioned, this has does not relate, the variances do not relate to the coffee shop as as a bright permission. It is the self-storage facility that requires the additional variances. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the panel committee may have.
Yeah, okay, that was a a good, that was a good answer. I didn't think of that, but, um, I guess someone could argue, well, it's all the overall site, you can't sort of, but I I would agree with your argument that, uh, these variances do not appear to be related to the either the fast food or the story, coffee shop or the drive-through. It's a stretch to say that it is. Uh, anyone else have any questions or comments for, uh, Mr. Mackay or for, uh, the, uh, representative of the, uh, uh, neighborhood association? And if not, if some can be taken into committee and, uh, make a decision. And again, we did not have transportation comments on this. That was on the last application dealing with the hotel and temporary parking. So we don't have anything from transportation on this application. Hey, so, um, guess let's bring it in to, uh, committee for a decision.
Yeah, Mr. Sir, Mr. Chair, just just a comment. Um, back in February, transportation said they wanted this deferred because they wanted to see and comment on uh, transportation study, which the, uh, applicant has since provided, but we don't have the benefit of a transportation department comment on it. So I don't know to what extent that influences our.
Yeah, well, they they would, this would have been circulated to transportation. They have it. They commented on many other applications, including the last one. Maybe they were too busy doing that three-page fulsome to be to do this. I seriously would think that if they had concerns, they would have weighed in. But I agree with you, it is sort of, it's a transportation-related application. You would think if they weighed in last time, and thank you for checking that, uh, that they would weigh in this time. Adam Secretary Treasure, did you hear anything with transportation? Were you expecting something on this application or?
I'm also surprised we didn't get anything, but they would have commented had they had any issues.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm just looking at the conclusion of the memo from transportation dated February third, two thousand and twenty-two, which was provided in our information. And it says they wanted additional information required to justify the proposed parking supply. So it it didn't have anything to do with the queuing of of information on the the drive-through or anything like that. And I think that that information has been provided, I believe.
Yeah, that's why we have no comment. They did provide information. That's why it was deferred for almost a year, right?
Yeah, and and the applicant has indicated, or I think you actually indicated, Chair, that the councillor meeting was held. So that was another thing that was asked for that was held. Um, so I'm subject to any other comments. I'm subject, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, thank you. And it is only, it was a six-month, not a one-year. That was the one for February tenth, twenty twenty-two. So go ahead and make a motion, sir.
So I'm gonna move for approval. Yeah, um, variance is requested or minor in nature and meet the four tests in the planning act. Um, and I'm trying to look to see if there's any conditions. MetroLink said they would provide comments on the site plan, so I don't see any conditions required here.
Yeah, the MetroLink, I guess that's usually considered that advisory.
Yeah.
So it's, yeah, they're an outside agency. Mr. Bellissimo, are you putting up your hands a second, man?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All in favor? Ms. Ruddock? You're not okay. The motion carries four to one with, uh, Ms. Ruddock dissenting. Uh, the application is approved.
Thank you very much. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you too, sir.
Bye-bye.
Okay, uh, next application is item number thirty-five. Um, again, this is a deferral. It's twenty-two Albright Avenue. Again, was deferred from the March tenth, twenty twenty-two hearing.
Mr. Chairman.
Application.
Sorry to interrupt the 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 agent, Matthew Rebo. He was on the line during the sound check. Uh, he is no longer on the line, so there's nobody to represent the application.
Okay, so let's stand this down to the end. We only have two other applications, but let's, uh, see if we can find them uh, while we do the next two applications. Sounds reasonable?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, next application then is item number thirty-six, sixty-five Silverstone Drive. Application to construct a new detached dwelling when attached garage. This was deferred from the April fifth, twenty twenty-two hearing uh, to consult with with planning and urban forestry. Um, we we have three variances. Copy of a, uh, the previous, uh, deferral request, uh, April email, uh, forestry is suggesting we deny variance number one. We have a material from the previous hearing. Urban forestry, again, they're looking for conditions two and five. They're, I I either defer on the, uh, refusal. And that's all we have. Uh, we have minutes, survey, applicants request to be rescheduled. Uh, and, um, that's it. So the speaker on this application is, uh, Koshik, uh, Suthar.
Good afternoon, Chair and the Committee Member.
Yes, uh, what happened since the last time, um, this mattered?
Once we receive the comments from the community planner, we eliminate the lot coverage, front yard setback, overall building height, front yard balcony, and also the, um, and we revise the drawings and from the lot, uh, gross floor area from point sixty-four to point fifty-eight. Because we need the more gross floor area because they are the.
I'm still on the wrong item on the screen.
My apologies.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so you had, uh, but you you really got rid of a whole bunch. You only have three variances left?
Yes, three variant of we need the gross floor area because their parents and sometime in-laws.
Yep.
They are living with them, so they need the one more bedroom. That's why we asking the gross floor area point fifty-eight and the planning department, they are agree with the point fifty-five. And means I am asking only the one hundred sixty-four square feet more than what the planning department, they recommend that. That's why, that is my only the presentations.
Okay, uh, thank you, sir. And we don't have, haven't heard anything. The committee planning doesn't, does not weigh in on this.
Sir, Mr. Chair, in additional information, we do have a an updated planning report.
Oh, we do? Okay. Now I had a trouble at the end, looking at that. Something got cut off.
There it is.
Okay.
There it is. So they do ask for a reduction in variance one to an FSI of zero point five five, where a zero point five eight is proposed.
Okay, but they, when they did that, uh, that was based on what he had previously, which was what?
Previously, it was the point sixty-four.
Good six-four. So they asked him to come back to point five five, and he came down to point five seven?
Yes, point five.
Okay, so that's that's pretty close, right? How many square feet difference between point five five and five seven?
Yeah. It's a one hundred sixty-four point ninety-nine square feet difference, point five five and point fifty-eight.
Okay. Okay, uh, members, thank you for pointing that out, because I didn't, uh, see that something happened at the end. I couldn't see the last few additional materials. So, uh, now what's the date of that memo?
And the date of memo was.
And sir, June the first. Okay, so you're at point five, uh, they wanted you to go to. I can, okay, can you scroll up? There's a proposed dwelling with a point five eight. They want you to come down to point five five. So that's what's before the committee. Okay, uh, members, uh, any questions for the applicant, or you have to decide, uh, if he's come down sufficiently? I I'm, I don't, I haven't read the the verbiage of, uh, their rationale. It's, if you could scroll, and I can see the rationale, otherwise leave it to others. Right at the end. Always go to the end first. Yeah, they acknowledge it's an improvement, so it is made following the changes. Okay. Okay, so, uh, it looks like they wanted him to come down another point zero three. Any further questions, uh, for the applicant, or is someone ready to bring a motion? Mr. Taylor?
I'll bring a motion, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'm satisfied that the variances meet the four tests. I'm satisfied that the zero point five eight S FSI is close to what the planning department would like in an ideal world. Um, so I'm gonna move approval, and I'm gonna make it subject to urban forestry conditions one and two. They asked for condition one in a memo dated May twenty-fourth. They asked for condition, uh, condition two in their, uh, June, um, current consolidated report. So I'll move approval subject to urban forestry conditions one and two.
Okay, thank you, sir. Secondaire for that, Mr. Bellissimo? All in favor? Unanimous approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
You have your, uh, variance. You have your application has been approved.
Thank you very much.
Item number thirty-seven, A, B, and C. Eleven Bellman Avenue. It's an application to, uh, for consensus sever the property to residential lots. Uh, existing dwelling to be demolished and the property redeveloped the site of two new detached dwellings on parts B and C, uh, resulting in, uh, requiring variances to the zoning bylaw. Um, these, I think, three, including the, uh, lot frontage area and height. Um, we have, um, yeah, we also have a road dedication being part three on this, and, um, that's about all we have on this application. We have the minutes from the last hearing. This was deferred from the, uh, March twenty-four, twenty twenty-two. And, um, we do have MetroLinks. We have a presentation. And we have the materials from the previous hearing. So let's hear from the two speakers, Alex Savanyu from Boosefields on the behalf of the app, um, agent for the applicant, as well as Forfuriio de Silva from two eighty-two Remington, registered to speak.
Um, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, committee members. Can you, can you hear me okay? This is Alex Savanyu with Boosefields.
Perfect, not too loud, not too low, no interference.
That's what I like to hear. Yeah, that's what I like to hear. Um, so, yeah, as I said, we've submitted a planning rationale letter outlining the appropriateness of the severance and how we believe the minor variances meet the four tests of the Planning Act. And just as a bit of a background, so you're correct, the application was deferred on March twenty-fourth. Is we did require a revised zoning notice to reflect updated plans. And just in this regard, um, ample work has been undertaken with planning staff on this application. Uh, we submitted about a year ago. We then met with staff, removed variances, including remove the entire third story of the building and significantly reduce the FSI to, I believe it was point eight two to point six four. After that, and further to the planning report that you have on file, staff asked that we further reduce the, um, FSI to point five nine. We've since done that, and this is reflected in the revised, uh, plans and zoning notices that we submitted. I believe it's dated May twelfth, um, is when we submitted it to the o- on the AIC. You'll also see in the AIC confirmation from planning that now they have no objections to the proposal because of these these moves that we made. Um, on slide two there, you can see specifically, if you can make it a bit bigger, if that's possible, unless you can see it, okay. Uh, the site is a through lot, so it has frontages on both, uh, Bellman and Remington. Um, and only this site and the site to the north are the only two through lots on this street. And what we're proposing to do, of course, is to split this lot vertically, so we have frontage on Bellman and and Remington. Uh, next slide, please. Maybe there's a bit of a lag, but but slide three, uh, you can see there, um, the existing dwelling faces Bellman and the rear yard faces Remington, as you can see with that, um, that that changeling fence, uh, along Remington. Um, if you can go to the next slide four, please. And maybe there's a bit of delay. I'm I'm not seeing as we flip through the slides. That could just be on my side. Um, but the a bit about the surrounding area, it is evolving. There's a number of new of recent new builds and severances uh, along Bellman, and specifically, as you can see in the the bottom middle photo there, that's the north side of Valero, ju- just west of Bellman, uh, quite new to the site. Uh, if you can go to the next slide, please. Um, so so again, as what I said, we're proposing to split the site so it has frontages on both streets and construct a new two-story detached dwelling on each of the law. a new two-story detached dwelling on each of the lots that will be quite similar and require the same variances. Uh, you can you can slip, you can go to slide seven, please. You can you can skip six and just go to seven. Um, and that's just in regards to the frontage. So about the frontage, as you can see here, of course, since we're splitting it vertically, there will be absolutely uh, no change from the existing condition, ten point nine-six and ten point nine-seven meters um, on both of the frontages. And just on that note, if you go to the next slide, please. Um, almost all of the lots along Remington and Bellman have frontages uh, less than the twelve-meter requirement. And the proposal would be entirely being keeping with 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 the with the existing block. And as far as severances goes, as you you know, uh, Mr. Chair Committee Members, most as far as severances go, I don't think it get more straightforward than this one, given the the unique nature of of this of this lot.
Um, yeah, I think I think I've uh, certainly heard enough at this point, uh, unless it it, you know, if anything cries out, there should actually be a different term for a horizontal severance compared to a vertical. All the rest of the lots in the street other than these two have are are not flow, uh, you know, go through lots. It makes consistent, perfect, perfect sense. As well, we have no neighbors and well, we have do have one neighbor. Uh, perhaps something. So perhaps you continue because I guess the most directly affected neighbor on that new frontage in the rear, uh, it is a change. So.
Yeah, sure.
Please finish your your presentation.
Okay, you can go to the next slide nine, please. Just a little bit briefly about the FSI. Um, to to maybe shorten things up, there are a number of FSI variances in the area or over twenty-eight. We've color-coded them here. At point five-nine, we are on the very lower scale um, of FSI. There's seven between point six-five and point seven-nine. Three between point eight and point eight-five and eight between one point oh-seven and one point oh-nine. Again, we've reduced the FSI numerous times to meet that point five-nine number as requested by staff. And part of what they wanted was because they wanted it to be more in keeping specifically with the um, existing FSI of homes along Bellman and Remington. So we did what they asked. We made it point five-nine again to to keep within this this range that staff asked for. And just on that note, this FSI that, you know, in my opinion, is quite mod- uh, moderate at point five-nine does not trigger any other envelope variances like length or coverage or or depth or anything like that, other than height. And you can go to the next slide, please, and I'll just briefly mention height. So the height variance, we're asking seven point nine-eight or seven point nine-eight meters to the midpoint of the roof. Whereas there's a area-specific bylaw that exists from nineteen seventy-nine that requires seven point five meters to the midpoint of the roof. But the new bylaw five-six-nine, two thousand and thirteen actually permits um, a building height to the top of the roof of nine point five meters. And we're actually at nine point four-four meters. So with all things considered, the the new way that city staff uh, look at look at height, we are completely compliant with it. And this is quite a technical variance because.
Under the old bylaw.
Under the old one, we're forty-eight centimeters over. With that being said, I'm I'm I'm, you know, we've worked with staff throughout the process. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have and happy to listen to to the neighbor that has um, has some questions or concerns.
Okay, I guess, you know, really, there should be, this is a different severance altogether. Do you, we do know, and it was relevant, and any other lots started out as a through lot or this these two were anomaly, and the others were originally built like that.
You know what? I I I I wouldn't, I I don't know. In our research, in our research, I didn't find any of these types of situations.
It's quite unique. It what's to me is more to wonder is why this didn't happen previously. And it's taken. Given the lot meaning that we see here. So let's hear from anyone else. Have any questions for Mr. Savanyu at this point, or we should we'll hear from the neighbor uh, at two eighty-two uh, Remington. And is that right next door to the the new build? Can't see that. Okay, perhaps we'll we'll last that of the neighbor, uh, uh, Porfirio de Silva, two eighty-two, where where that is, is it right? I believe it is right behind, or maybe it's few over.
Uh, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Okay, so I'm uh, Porfirio de Silva and I'm at two eighty-two Remilton Avenue. I'm.
Yeah, could you try to speak a little clearer into the microphone? You're kind of faint.
Okay, how about now? It's better now?
Little better.
Okay, so I'm at two eighty-two Remilton and uh, I built my own house in two thousand, in nineteen ninety-nine.
And uh. Sir, I'm trying to figure out where you are. Are you right next door to the new house to be proposed to build on on the back of the lot?
No, I'm two lots north of uh, of the lot.
Oh, I so okay, I can see because I can can read these numbers, but I can see that a house next door looks like it's two eighty-four, then there's two eighty-two.
Correct.
So you're one house over.
That's right.
Okay, what's your, and uh, do you have any concerns, sir? What's uh?
Yeah, my concerns is uh, about the percentage of the lot that uh, they're gonna be using and also the the height. Which uh, there there, I don't know. I'm not aware of any uh, new law. But when I built, it was only uh, certain height and this uh, this neighbor is uh, asking a little higher than everybody else. So and also the point uh, fifty-nine, which means almost sixty percent of the property, when I built, I was only allowed to build forty percent.
Forty, you you complied with the bylaw, I take it, then?
Correct, yes.
You didn't go over. You didn't come to committee to ask for more? How many years ago is that, sir?
Actually, I uh, I went, I went a little bit over. So the percentage was forty percent and I went to forty-six percent.
Okay, so you had to come to committee and you went to forty-six percent.
Correct, yes.
How many years ago was that, sir?
That's uh, twenty years ago.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, uh, so your concern is with the height, uh, you and and the fact that uh, they're getting fifty-nine percent and forty years ago, twenty years ago, you got forty-six percent.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, and everybody in the in the neighborhood, these lots were uh, three, three hundred feet long like this lot is. And uh, everybody severed the way they want it and the majority of them severed according to uh, whatever they want to build. And uh, so majority of the houses are in the forties to forty-five percent uh, of the lot.
Okay, so sir, I'm looking at your lot here up on the screen. So it looks like your lot was split also. And it looks like in the front, it was fifteen and fifteen A, so it was even split uh, vertically in addition to horizontally. It looks like your lot is shorter, quite a bit shorter than two eighty-four and two eighty. If you can see, I don't know if you're able to see the screen or if you're on a watching on YouTube. So that obviously affects, that obviously affects your lot coverage, your FSI. If you have a shorter lot, you'd have a higher number, right? So uh, this one is being split uh, like shown on the plan.
Yeah.
Number eleven. I don't, actually, this plan doesn't show where it's being split. I think it's being split. Perhaps Mr. Savan, you can advise exactly fifty-fifty. Your lot, sir, looks like a very small, short, and the fifteen in front of you looks much deeper. So maybe that explains the numbers difference, okay?
Yeah.
Actually, you're, okay, um. Anyone have any uh, questions uh, to for the neighbor before we give it back to Mr. Savanyu to respond formally? Okay, Mr. Savanyu? You've heard the concerns of the neighbor.
Yeah, I I have, and and thank you for bringing those up. And and you are correct, Mr. Chair. Our our split is going to be fifty-fifty. And and you can see part three there, we're actually dedicating those lands to to the city. Um, part three on the right-hand corner of the screen. Again, like, w- when it comes to height, I I don't think I need to bring up the map, but there have been numerous height variances secured. And and again, ours is forty-eight centimeters over the the bylaw requirement. And I think the most important thing is that um, the the current zoning standards is for nine and a half meters and and we're under that. So we are complying with the current uh, zoning standards. And if we're talking about FSI, again, we've worked so much with staff to reduce it. Point five-nine was that number that they specifically referenced that they wanted to see because that is what they thought ought to be in keeping with um, the existing developments along both streets. Um, even though in in my opinion, it 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 is quite modest. There's numerous variances secured larger than that, but you know, we're we're happy and we think that um, this is a modest design that does fit within the neighborhood and it doesn't create any other variance. It's not, it's not a monster home at all, so.
Kudos to you. You're only here for FSI and a small height variance. There's no other setbacks. Even if, you know, you could have tried to say, well, it's on our lot and we control it like a rear yard, could have said, well, and there's no one gonna complain. At least the most of directly because you control both lots. So I think you were very modest in only having really one uh, you know, very little in terms of actual variances other than a lot frontage. So kudos to you. Uh, members, any questions to Mr. for Mr. Savanyu or for the neighbor? And there were some ready to weigh in with a motion? And we're almost done. One more to go back, number thirty-five. Oh, and um, obviously we have the the normal uh, do I see uh, construction and development services memo here or no?
Yes, because of the dedication.
Right, I'm saying I just don't see it in our materials, or maybe it was in the previous.
It's in the previous package, so there's a separate. It says materials from previous hearing.
Right, okay, here it is now. Okay.
The February tenth one.
Yeah. Okay, members, any questions or uh, Mr. Taylor?
Unless anybody has any comments or questions, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'm glad the engineering and construction services matter came up because uh, while they haven't communicated on the last two applications, I believe it's important to impose their conditions of approval because one of them has to do with the conveyance of part three to the city. So I think to give effect to the entire project here, um, I guess I gotta back up a little bit. I'm moving approval of the consent. Uh, I think it's very reasonable. I think the lot pattern is actually more appropriate than what exists now, given what's uh, in the neighborhood. Um, so I I no, no reluctance at all in moving approval of the consent. And I would make that a approval subject to the standard conditions of consent and the conditions of um, engineering and construction services per the February tenth, two thousand and twenty-two application. And with respect to the variances, as as has been noted, they're very reasonable. There are only three of them. I'm satisfied that they're all minor and they meet the other tests under the planning act. So I would move approval of both variance applications subject to urban forestry conditions two and three.
Okay, thank you for that motion, Mr. Taylor. Seconded for that, I see Mr. Bellissimo's hand up.
Simone, yes.
Okay, um, all in favor? Unanimous approval. Thank you, Mr. Savanyu, and thank you to Mr. De Silva for participating. Okay, uh, so we have one more application. We've been able to back up to number thirty-five. I've been, we've been able to find uh, the agent.
My name is Matthew Rebo.
Hey, we found you. Okay, I'll introduce this application. Uh, it's subject to urban forestry wants conditions one and two. It's for additions. There's seven variances, eight letters of support, and we have the materials in the previous hearing. This matter was adjourned March the tenth.
So my name is Matthew Rebo, uh, representing Gasford Design uh, Group. Um, I am, I just, for the record, I was in the webinar but had no way of uh, uh, voicing that I was there uh, when it was skipped over. So I just uh, but fortunately, we were able to communicate over email and we're we're hearing this application today. Um, I did want to say that, yes, we are aware of the uh, former comments. We have reached out to uh, Transportation Works and we are, we do um, understand the requirements in order to get their approval. Um, uh, basically, just a couple notes on the site plan uh, and uh, in order to move the fire hydrant. So we will make sure that that is uh, done uh, in the building permit stage. Uh, and we have no issues um, if the this, if this application is approved with conditions. Uh, also subject to conditions from forestry that we obtain uh, uh, the appropriate approvals for the two trees.
Okay, we have the transportation conditions in the original materials in their memo. There's four points.
Yep.
That was in their original materials. That's still applicable. March four, two thousand and twenty memo?
Correct. Okay, so the the this is my point. If we uh, if you're uh, we didn't see the need to revise the materials for this hearing, but uh, basically, we understand what the requirements are, knowing that we'll need to um, get their approval in order to obtain building permit. So if you don't mind, uh, just uh, you know, uh, subject to these conditions, um, um, will satisfy this application, I think.
Okay, anyone have any questions uh, for Mr. Rebo? And if not, is someone ready to weigh in with a motion?
Mr. Palmer? Yeah, I'm prepared. Um, reviewing the application for the variances, uh, the request is uh, minor in nature and meets the four tests. So I'll move for approval subject to transportation conditions um, March fourth, two thousand and twenty-two and subject to urban forestry conditions one and two.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Palmer. Seconded for that. Mr. Taylor, thank you. All in favor? Unanimous approval. Thank you, Mr. Rebo. Glad we found you. Uh, you're our last approval, last hearing of the day, last approval. And uh, you have your approval.
Thank you for your time, counsel, and have a great evening.
Thank you. You too. Okay, with that, uh, we are now uh, need a motion to adjourn. We've done all all of our applications. Motion to adjourn, Mr. Taylor and Mr. uh, Bellissimo. Okay, so we're done. Another successful day of hearings. Okay, we'll see you all next time.
Thanks, bye-bye.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, Barb. And again, to our staff, thank you so much. Adam and Paul and whoever else is there behind the scenes, Nicole, Phil. Okay, thanks.